Okay. I call this meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District to order. It is 5:39 PM on Thursday, the 10th of November. For the agenda, I would like to move because there's present at the meeting currently, our Commissioner Singleton. What is my deal?
What is your deal?
Commissioner Singleton, Commissioner Fort, and myself, the chairman. And I would like to change our agenda around because we also have some of our employees sitting in that they do not need to sit in on the executive session. So if that's all right with everyone, we'll do the budget presentation first and we'll conclude with the executive session at the end. Does that work for you guys?
It's fine.
Okay. Mr. Executive Director, take it away. And we talked about it before you got here about what we're going to do is because we can never resist sticking our, you know, he wanted to do it all and then have us talk. It's like, no, we're gonna, he's gonna do it a page at a time. And so we can, we can, we can then bring it, let him talk for the page and then we'll, we'll ask our questions.
Fantastic.
Well, we-
And thank you for briefing me on the process.
I know you're a process person.
Indeed.
Mr. Director.
Thank you. So this is our proposed budget for the 2017, sorry, did that not right? And a lot of work went into it on our part. There were a lot of things, some last minute-
It's crisis.
-legal things that came up that we had to adjust to. So first off, I want to publicly acknowledge the efforts and thank my staff for the hard work, especially with some of my short fuse requests for explanation. So as you know, the Initiative 1433, over the next four years raises the minimum wage up to $13.50 in the state of Washington. And beginning in 2018, there's a, we have to pay sick leave for our employees too. So we'll talk a little about that. Those aren't really the agenda items for tonight. We'll talk about them, but what I can do in the December meeting, whenever we have, when you're back for the December meeting, we can do, as part of the agenda, we can talk about this and all that so that we can clarify more. It shouldn't take much time and by then you probably will know it all anyway. So this year, as, you know, like I said, this year's been a huge discovery year and next year it won't be much different, really. But we tried as best we can to put as much process and reasoning into these numbers so that they're not just, well, this is the way it was or that's the way it is there. So we're gonna go page at a time and try to do it. But first off, I want to acknowledge that we have district goals. And so there are three major goals for the district. One is to promote healthy living and recreation for the people of our district. And we as a staff are actively promoting water safety through school visits, swim school programs, and other things out there. And through other, our various other activities and events, we're trying to create positive childhood experiences for people out there. Another one is to maintain clean, safe environment. Right now, I believe we provide that, but we are also going to, in the next year, in the first quarter, be able to present in April, a comprehensive maintenance plan that should help clarify some of those things and help keep us in more of a proactive position than being reactive to things. And then improving the strength and public image for the district, general trust of taxpayers. We're striving hard, we're striving hard to better exhibit financial stability and discipline in here. We're working not just for a balanced budget, but for a profitable P and L out there. And this budget, our plan is to pay back the reserve from 2015, you'll see that. And our plan is to try to get another 6K into the reserve this year. But I will tell you that the minimum wage thing was a delta of about $16,000 to us. So anyway, we will continue to review the existing programs that we have and look for, make recommendations for how to approve them. And always looking for more efficient ways to publicize what we do, to be out there more effectively market, get it out there way sooner. And then we'll be exploring other options to provide more community recreational types of opportunities for people in the district. And the last of my preamble is, it's really about, this year's really gonna be about execution of the budget. I did set small growth goals, nothing really more than 10% anywhere. I did, because we can't maintain static. We have to at least shoot for it if we're gonna do this right here. But we will always be as cognizant as we can about minimizing overhead and increasing the margins. But, and also, everything we do will have the prism of patron safety in mind. So we won't sacrifice that ever. So we'll change the way we're gonna do it. So if we go to page one-
Can I ask first? So the original copy that we got in our email had two number values on it. Is there a reason why this one doesn't?
What do you mean, two number values?
It had 2016 budget, 2017 budget on, on the original copy.
The one you got Tuesday night?
Yeah. The one was in the folder out there.
Yeah. Oh, if it's still in the folder, I'll just go get that one.
Yeah, go get the folder.
It's just not helpful to me to look at a number by itself. It's like relative to what? So I'll go grab it.
It's very helpful.
It's not out there anymore?
Well, they're not out there.
Okay, well, I-
I mean, it was helpful to sort, for me when I was going through it to see one side versus the other.
And that's how, that's the only one I had time to look at.
Right.
And so that makes sense to me.
I understand.
And I didn't see that one, because I printed this, I saw the second one, I printed it, didn't even look at the one you'd sent me. I thought it was just different. And I sat with the 2016 budget and put the numbers in myself so I could look at it and recognize that, you know, but it's, it's just of interest. It's a starting point for us.
Want me to sit over here by you?
What's that? I can just make a copy of it if you don't mind. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, take the time.
Put all my comments on.
I know, I know.
Set the jeopardy call.
We all might have to yell someone out.
Just make sure you have your comments.
So for the public audience, Commissioner Singleton has left the room and she's making copies and the rest of us are sitting here. So anyone have any big plans for Veterans Day that you care to share with our interested public?
No comment.
[laughing].
Perhaps taking tomorrow off.
You may do that. It's not, it's not one of the recognized holidays, is it? I can't reference it.
No, it wasn't.
It is, okay, so-
The schools don't follow it.
Yeah. I always loved Veterans Day, because it came in the middle of the week and it was just cool, because it was our holidays.
Broke up the week. Schools don't follow, aren't schools on the line?
No, schools don't.
I never get any of the holidays.
Lay my last, the schools don't.
Really? So you were always like on a watch or something?
Well, no, I mean, if it happened to be my day off, it's my day off. It depends on me.
But that's what I mean, so you were on like some kind of a watch?
Yeah.
A watch, because man, the whole, your whole-
You were a doctor.
I was an intel officer, but sometimes I was like in charge and I had, instead of being on a watch, I was in charge of people and I had Monday through Friday and come in Saturday, oh, and Sunday, but it was like I still had-
It was 24/7, 365.
I'm so sorry. That sucks.
Sorry, I'm too dumb to keep the super.
[laughing]. Wrong one, ha ha. Okay.
Okay, so there are eight pages. So page one right now is like the things I'm gonna add here. The levy, the levy is based on our calculations and I did run these through county and they said that they looked good. Five seventy-eight, seven ninety, seven fifty-nine, fifty-five. And that includes a 1% increase, any refunds and other things on there. It also reflects the last of the $6,500-plus dollars that they're gonna have to withdraw for the 2015 overpayment to us. So it, next year, next year, remember this 1% matters, because next year becomes the baseline for the next six years. Anyway, the next one, line item number nine, is silver sneakers in there. We're doing about, silver sneakers is a hard one, because it's, the more people that come, I mean, that's better. But we've been averaging about 200 a month, so that's why we're shooting for, it's got its own line item now in, well, it happened last year too, because it had a number to it. And so we're gonna shoot for about 2,400 from silver sneakers. Daily admission, as I said, I'm looking for some growth in our, in some of our programs. So for daily admission, we're, I'm shooting for about a modest 8.5% in this area. There is a new squadron starting, well, they're filtering in now, this month here. And through more, through better marketing and I'm supposed to meet, whenever she returns a call, I'm supposed to meet with Deana Nichols over at the city. She's a lady that does Channel 10. And I did talk to her and we can use that as a way to get things up there on the thing. And I know a lot of people that are Channel 10, I even do it because we're on, sometimes we're bored. Number 11, for the, for the front page, passes. This year's not been, this year hasn't been as good. We've experienced a lower-than-anticipated thing. The common, this one here, I don't know. The common complaint though is there's no family pass. So that's one of the things that we will do to bring to the subcommittee, program review subcommittee, to see, to address it and see if there's something we want to offer in the family passes. But that's really one of the major complaints that we give from it. On the punch cards, on line item 12, year-to-date, we're down about 16% on what, from last year. Our belief on this is that the punch cards are based on the morning lap swim rate. And only about 25 to 30% of our lap swimmers come in the morning. So if you're an afternoon lap swimmer, like Kushter Fort, makes no sense, because $3.50 is less than the punch card rate. So that's another thing that we need to come visit with the subcommittee on and see how do we, how do we try to fix that to make it work. If there's an option there for everyone to try to get some of, or however it works out. But anyway, we will come and address that right now. Or not right now, but here, here soon. On line 13, kayak lessons. Kayak lessons right now are only for Skagit Valley. This is what we project from the five classes that people teach to Skagit Valley. And what we, again, we need to come to the subcommittee again to bring the board, what sort of pricing structure we want, because he does get interested, people wanting to do private stuff, but we don't really have a, I don't think we have a board-approved price.
We, we do. It's what was, it just hasn't been changed, so-
We do need to change it.
And I know we do. But it's, it's like until, if people are interested, by all means, I mean, I don't think we're losing money with-
No, no, it's additional revenue that we could potentially get.
Exactly.
I know, I took private lessons, because I took them many years ago.
Yeah, I would say don't, absolutely don't turn anybody away, because there is board, the board approved whatever the current prices are there. We just never, we hadn't gotten up to that when we got into hiring you and it got-
Well, we will come and have an update discussion on those, because they do need to go up a little bit.
Agreed.
Based on what we're doing. Okay. On line item 14, American Red Cross classes. This includes, we plan on having eight classes throughout the year. That includes a lifeguard, babysitting, and first aid, CPR stuff. The number here is, in here, is based on the minimum class size of four to run it. But we typically get more than that, so, but I have to base a projection on something. So I'm basing it on the minimum to run the class. I think that will, that will go up through the year as we do more things. On line 15, aerobics. I'm not, I don't even really, aerobics is something we've sort of beat to death here until, but we plan early December to meet with the subcommittee for the program review and talk about this, because we're starting to solidify some ideas based on also discussions we've had. And we need, and we need to fix aerobics from how we charge in there, because there are just so many different ways people can pay. It's hard to know if we're really being profitable or if it, what we're doing. I'll also share this, I think I put this in my notes for the, for the October meeting, but I'm supposed to meet in December, well, we're gonna try to meet in December with the MWR guy. They are considering, and this is way early in the phase, extending aerobics to retirees here in town. I probably would extend it to active members too.
So when people kept checking at the front desk, could you not keep a separate list of people who were doing aerobics class and do it that way?
We do.
You do?
There's a sign up sheet. It's just the multiple methods of payment. Silver sneakers is $2.50, aerobics is $5.50.
Well, I mean, and then put a sideline, is that checked off how they pay?
Didn't even make it to the bottom of the page.
I know.
Go for it, I'm saying it.
What's that?
See, I told you.
Didn't even make it to the bottom of the page.
And I did it first, I apologize.
Well, I'll see. Okay, what's that?
Signing sheet.
Yeah, okay. What Julie says, the signing sheet has, has that stuff. So that's, those are the data we capture, to try to figure this out. All right, line 17, the school group. Right now, last year, we only had, Oak Harbor Elementary, because it's across the street, they'd walk over here and they came over for three classes. And that's all they're planning to do this year. I did meet with their principal as part of going through the parking thing out there, which seems to be a lot better, at least the times I've tried to come in randomly to hit the bad time and I've always been able to get a spot and we'll get a few more open. But I did broach the subject with her and we will with the school district as well, about expanding either more third grade classes coming through or, you know, start next year it becomes K through four, because fifth, sixth graders will go to Oak Harbor Middle. Open it up to K through four for these lessons here. It's, it's a good deal for these kids to come over here. And we're also revisiting the other schools and as I said, I'm going back, I'm gonna go back and meet with Steve King, the assistant, Lance Givens' assistant, and see what we can do about that more. And then I think you made a suggestion at the last levy, subcommittee meeting, and we're gonna take it to him as well. Expand out to the middle schools and see if we can get something from them as part of a PD, so. Trying to make sure my numbers are aligned here. Private lessons, private lessons have been good for us. However, here, late in the year, we lost three of our top. These, these were the ones that carried private lessons for us. They're gone, within a month, they were gone. So we're working to rebuild that stable. And one of the things we're doing, that Jessica's done, is she's requiring all of her swim instructors to take on private lessons now. And there's, there are some other things we're doing, like trying to establish standard times, so that it's more predictable for patrons. We know private lessons are done, blah, 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 as best we can. So that won't always be 100% of the time, but that's what we're shooting for. So I'm, I'm going a little bold on this one here, because we did so well last year on it. Once, I think once we get this recalibrated with some more instructors, I'm shooting for a 10% growth on this one for the year. And then youth lessons, youth lessons usually go pretty well. So I'm shooting this year, I'm asking Jessica to bring us another 8% into it. Anyway, that's page, that's everything for page one.
I don't understand the numbers. Sorry, I, so private, so eight, line 18, private lessons budget for 2016 was $21,500 and the projected budget for 2017 is $12,342, and that's a 10%.
No, it's 10% over our new cap. What we, what we went, based on, we have 10 hours, there are 10 hours a week, 51 weeks that-
Okay, but, sorry, if I look back to that, then, I mean, we just went through the process of revising the budget. If we knew that revenue, if, if that's what our, if that's what our revised revenue target is for 2016 and we, we knew we were way under it, I, I don't, I don't have all the paperwork with me and I don't remember. I think it just confuses.
The 20, that actually, the actual, at the end of September was $19,000. So we budgeted $21,500. So we still, actually, at the end of September was $19,000, so 12,000 is-
So what, $12,000?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not getting that.
I remember, because they said that a lot of people bought swim lessons, because we were increasing the price. So does that, is that why you made it so much less?
So it's technically a decrease and that's what I'm not getting.
Yeah.
Which line?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. See where it's, the, the budget from 2016 is $21,500.
Yeah.
And we were at like 88% of that at the end of September. And I just assumed, well, maybe-
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Trying to explain why, I'm trying to remember why he did it that way. I, I remember we talked about this when we saw how high the numbers were and the suggestion was made that people had bought a lot of lessons at the lesser price and so that we're now gonna have them using up those lessons, so maybe at 2016, 2017, they won't buy, you know, they bought a lot of lessons. I'm, I'm thinking that, I thought that's what your thinking was, but-
Well, the number's wrong though, because it says it has a 10% growth.
Yeah.
And that's why I was trying to-
Yeah.
There's, there's a piece of data or a mistake.
Yeah. That would be, there's definitely a, you know, 8 or 10% growth in the regular swim program, but not in private.
It's possible I dyslexic.
So we had spoken about $21,500 as being the private lessons here. In this, I believe, because we do have the number 12,342 at the top for 10 hours a week. So I don't know if that generates, if this was supposed to be, I don't know. But $21,500 is what we're gonna talk about originally. What's on our 2016?
2016 was $21,500.
Okay, so that was our original number.
And did you wanna, did you wanna go up 10% from that $21,500? Are you gonna make $21,500 this year?
Well, the reason, if we would, I mean, it would be a blessing if we did get to that, but because we lost our three main ones and I have to restructure the whole thing, that is partially why it's lower than the $21,500. Because they were running, especially Marcio and Bailey, they were running 20 lessons of each plus on the phone. And it was a huge chunk of our program.
Yeah.
And so now, you know, going to college and living the dawn of life.
Well, good for them. We're happy that they're succeeding.
That, that hit us hard in that area.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to restructure.
So then for 2017, what do you think?
We can at least meet somewhere in the middle.
Well, I'm not gonna do that too, so.
Well, and no, I, I think, I think it's the verbiage, I mean, if you do the math, it's 12,342. That's, that's accurate, but, but when you have in here that it's 10% targeted growth, I think, I think that gives a misleading, it gives a misleading thing, because it's like, oh, so we're gonna be higher than next year.
Yeah.
Well, no, we're actually gonna be lower than next year and that's okay, we just need to understand it.
Yeah. And especially when you take, because we've just lost three of our most prolific instructors.
Yeah.
Understood, you know, but do you, is it really gonna take that long to rebuild that? Because maybe you'll have-
It shouldn't, because I've already put out an email to my staff, all my instructors, doesn't matter if they're a various lines, doesn't matter if they're just a basic level entry instructor, doesn't matter what their experience is. They are going to be teaching at, you know, there's going to be a minimum requirement, at least weekly or monthly, that I would like to see from all of them. Because our stack for, you know what I mean, it's a high demand for private lessons and if it's there, we can create money out of it. It's gonna run, it has to run, otherwise the program just won't go.
So, you know-
So the number is accurate and-
The number is accurate, I'm not sure, it could have been, yes, sir.
So basically, actually, I had a problem, I had a problem with sort of these estimates, you know, 8%, line 10, 8% was originally 8% and then when you had the problem with the $11, you said, well, we'll just make it 8.5% so we get more money in the budget. And then, you know, the 10%, the 8%.
That was actually, I went and said, can, do you think we can do more?
Okay.
It wasn't a, just to get it, it was, it was actually a thought-out thing.
Okay. I mean, I mean, that's, I think we've had problems with the budgets and having to redo them in the past, because we always sort of, oh gosh, we, let's, I think we can do more and we, we should, you know, well, we need to have a plan of how we're gonna do more and, and I think this, in my opinion, I think we're overestimating it. And we'll, in the future, in the mid-year review, whatever, we're gonna have to say, well, we're not gonna quite make it. So again, I would base most of it on what we did last year.
And I guess I would, I would, I would provide a contrary opinion, which would be, if we didn't have stretch goals, I would be really concerned.
Well, it's one thing to have goals, but I think we need to make them realistic.
But that's what it is. Right, and, and I appreciate the fact that, for example, even though I was, I personally read something differently than, you know, the, the math for, this is how we got to this number, hey, that makes perfect sense to me. And so I actually, I, I think you're comparing it to things in the past, but I don't think you realize how that process was before.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that we're, sorry, it's-
I agree.
But, but, so I actually appreciate this process far more than, than how it's been done. I mean, last year was a little, a little more painful for lots of other reasons, but the previous year, that was my first meeting as a commissioner and like, hey, we approved this budget. And I remember having a conversation about, for example, I'm not, sorry, I'm not trying to drag this out, but having a conversation about, hey, Julie, can you cut your number by $5,000, because we really need you to? Well, and it was basically personnel costs and it was like, I mean, what is she supposed to say? Sure? Knowing full well that the month, the numbers were gonna come back at us anyway, so it's like, why do we do that? So I actually think there's a lot more integrity-
So you think 8% is realistic, 8.5?
I, I think that it, I hope so, and, and I, well, but, but here's the thing, here's, here's the thing. If we don't have, if we don't have goals to meet, then, then what's the point? I mean, just saying, well, you know, we're just doing it the way we do it last year.
But again, we're making a budget. If we come out ahead in the budget, that's good. If we, well, we come out behind in the budget, it's, it's a problem. If you do your home budgeting, or if you do any other budgeting, you don't say, well, maybe I can make more money this year, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I mean, I just, I just have a problem with over, I would change the estimates.
To what?
4%.
Why 4?
I don't know, but, because I think 8% is too high. I agree, you gotta plan something, but I think we're just using the percentages to try and make the budget fit balance.
Do you, do you have, is, is there a reason why? Because, I mean, the, the numbers aren't all the same. Are there, was this based on analysis, was this based on, so 8.5, so for example, line 10, 8.5%? Is that, is that based on?
That's based on a discussion with Julie, looking at the numbers and going, all right, what do we want to sign up for? We have to sign up for something more, I can't stay static. And I know you all understand that. So I said, all right, well, what are you comfortable trying to achieve? And so that's the number.
I don't disagree with your point about, let's not, yeah, like, let's, let's not like, well, good, because we've got this crazy thing over here that we're gonna pay for with this money that we're not sure we can get, right? I mean, that's, that's the danger you're talking about. And I, and I guess that too. You know, I, I think everyone does.
I like the idea of stretching toward sort of goal as well. And I think they have put some thought into it. And like Kaz mentioned, there's gonna be an increase of Navy personnel. Navy people have to swim, or can, can choose to swim if they don't like to run and often do have an affinity for the water. I think that's a good thing. And I think, I think we can reach toward that. And, and we, we've always said, you just don't know who's gonna come through door. We don't know what the weather's gonna be like, what are gonna be the other things drawing. And if we do good work on advertising that you've talked about, I think you, you can increase attendance.
Well, I'm gonna jump ahead of, later on down in my, my little syllable here. I took QuickBooks away from Julie, not, not punitive, but I took it out of hers and put it over into finance department. And the gist of that, or the reason for that was because I want to free Julia to do more of the things that she's supposed to be able to do for us here in advertising and the creativeness of her events and things like that. That's what I'm looking for her to do. So it's, is that something I can measure right now? No, I wish I could, but that's why I took part of her job, put it over into finance so that I wouldn't be able to let her, give her the ability to go do more marketing out there and advertising. so that I wouldn't be able to let her, give her the ability to go do more marketing out there and advertising.
Which is super cool. Are we on page two?
We're still on page one. I'm, I'm sort of thinking, it's like, we're kind of, we haven't, the two of us sort of agree that they're, it's okay. Doc, are you okay, excuse me, Commissioner Ford, are you okay?
No, but I mean, I, I don't have to agree.
Well, it's true, but I want people to be happy.
Well, but we're not going to do that.
I mean, we're not always going to agree on everything. I don't, I'm not going to get upset about disagreeing.
Okay.
Not Donald Trump. Sorry.
I have a question on the art classes. The, you're going to do eight in twenty seventeen, how many did we do in twenty sixteen? Because I was just looking at the.
I do not know the, do you know the number we did?
How many art classes did we do in twenty sixteen?
Well, we also had a very large one, if you remember, Erica did a WSI course.
I do remember that one.
So that was a larger portion of last year's budget itself, and that's why that was factored in. And I do not have my instructor trainer certification, so those types of classes will not be with us at the moment. That doesn't mean I'm not searching and seeking for that to happen down the road. And we will create classes that will draw on from that way. And then what was the original?
My original question was, because I was looking at it, it's like, this is a, this is a three thou, this is a three thousand dollar increase in expected revenue over twenty sixteen, and I just wondered how many.
I would say we have had at least eleven last year.
In twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen.
Yes, because we had created the babysitting course. Only Erica and myself had, had rolled over into that material. And those were created on top of.
Okay, so here's my question, if we did eleven in twenty sixteen and made like ninety-five hundred dollars, and you're expecting to make twelve thousand seven hundred with only eight classes, how does that happen?
Well, that is a part of the WSI course that I was just explaining. That was a part of the eleven. Since I'm not certified as an instructor trainer, I can't provide those classes. So I can provide the babysitting course. And I do have a, an outline of classes that are listed for the year, because I've already got a timeline and everything and when we should have them.
Okay, apparently I am stupid, because I don't understand how we can make three thousand less with more classes. You, you want to do, you did eleven in twenty sixteen and made ninety-five hundred. So is that twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty the right number? Because this is.
These are all based off the class course hours multiplied by what the class is costing us with the limited number for four students per class, that's our base minimum is the four.
Can we just check that with, I mean, can we take the action to just check that? I know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, three thousand dollars or whatever, but just, just so we understand, you know, are, are we really solid with that number?
And I assume that the hourly wage for, for the instructor is higher than eleven dollars now?
Yes, if you are, well, it varies. If you're a lifeguard instructor that is sixteen, you are a beginning WSI, you start at twelve. But that has nothing to do with American merit cost, WSI is purely swim lessons.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we factored in the, the wage increase, if it was affecting this.
No, 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 that stuff is not changed at all.
All right, thanks.
Okay, that was my only question on page one. Does anyone else have any, anything on page one?
Nope.
Okay.
But we're considering that an open item.
Yes, I wrote it down.
Okay, just make sure.
Check line, did you get that, check line fourteen? Okay.
Okay, page two?
Page two.
All right. Starting off with the line twenty-two, the travel fun fee. Right now, the, the number that you see in there is, is based on forty-six swimmers. I think we now have actually forty-seven. Tonight again, another one. This, this covers about, there are about twenty-nine of them that are individual and the rest put in multi-family discount. So the number we're looking here, looking at here is, is based only on these projections. It doesn't account for any growth that we might get. And it doesn't account for if there's any other revenue stream that comes into that. So, but, so this is the number we're going to work with for right now. So anything that comes in more than that, that's good. And then I'll, once I get to there on the expense side, then, then I'll close the loop on this, on this one here. Because I know you're interested in that. All right, meet fees collected. So right now, where we are, we're, through the last two years that Coach has been here, right now, he's pretty much docked what the meet schedule is on a year. It might vary one or two events here, horse trading or something, but it's pretty much what the, what they are. So for the number of people that he has now, meet fees collected, he's keeping it, because we're, that's about what we're, what we're going to do. And as the team grows, this number will go too. But as you know, it's offset by the meet fees we have to pay out as well. But I mean, just from, from currently, that's what the numbers would be. Based on the number of event, number of swim meets that are in the, in the queue and the number of swimmers that go to them that have to pay the meet fees. Okay, the next one is line twenty-eight, the dues. Right now, when I did this one here, it was based on forty-five swimmers. We use the average rate of seventy-one, because trying to go through, they get promoted and, and stuff at various times, and it's, it's too hard. So we're just using the middle rate like we did in the past. And this assumes that they all stay for eleven months of the season, that some may, some might not, in my growth. So this doesn't have, account for any growth to the team. And I can tell you that probably, I think it's May or June, whenever we visit the, it'll be the two-year timeframe from the last thing, we fully anticipate recommending a, a small increase in that and in the family fund travel fee, so. But that, since I don't know what that's going to be, I can't factor that into this yet. Thirty-eight, special events. Oh, actually, let me go back to thirty-six, I don't think I covered that. So I did get a, I did have an exchange with the running coach dude, but he never responded to coming out and having a meeting with me. So I'm not putting anything in here for him. We'll do it like last year, if he decides he wants to do it, we'll run the numbers, we'll come present it to you guys to get approval to add that to the program. So he's interested, he said he wants to do it, he may just be too busy and didn't respond or forgot or whatever there. But, and that late in the game, I just chose not to chase him down and try and, because there's more work that has to go into that to figure out the P and L. All right, so thirty-eight, special events. So these are, this, like I said, I'm freeing Julie up to do a lot of things. Special events aren't going to bring in, you know, an order of magnitude more revenue, but they can bring in some good ancillary revenue to us. But what we're looking for this year on that is offer some more. And Julie and I are going to be pounding the pavement. We're going to be looking for businesses to help sponsor things, so we can, you know, like the Goldfish, those are provided by the Pet Island Pet Center, I think, who does that. So that doesn't cost us anything. But there are other events that we can look to try and get more local businesses to sponsor stuff. We'll, we advertise it, they're our sponsor for the event and stuff like that. And also, we will increase the marketing reach for that there, as, as that's becoming more refined through the, through the venues that we market these events out there, Facebook and all the other stuff that we get out there with. We hit, we send them to the school and the schools form them. So there are a lot of ways for them there. So we, we will be working that one hard. Forty-three, the surplus sales. My honest estimate of that is that's about what we can get for, for kayaks and two vehicles. I don't, whatever I had last year, which I don't have that with me. I don't, I, I, in talking with Pete and talking with Matt, I think those are, that's about a good estimate. And we do plan to join the city's auction this year, so that should reduce, I don't know, to what, yes, sir?
Yep.
Nope, sorry. We're going to finish the page, we're going to do this right.
Okay, but it should reduce some of the costs that we were going to have to do out there. We still have to go through the parliamentary procedure, if you will, for lack of a better term, to, to clarum and all that stuff there, but. That's just meeting time. And that's it for that page that I have, for some page two.
Commissioner Ford, ask your question.
So, for two questions. So we're working on, on this new one, so we ended the page at number forty-five, correct?
Forty-five.
Or did we go to forty-six? Which is scuba?
Oh, scuba, well, mine, scuba's.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, okay, I'll wait for that. All right, I'll wait till next time. And so then, I just, is number forty-three, is that after cost, you know, the city costs?
No, that's just revenue, that's true. I don't know what the costs are going to be for that.
So, okay.
But I, but I, I'm going to hope, we were, I was planning last year in the four hundred fifty to five hundred. I'm hoping it's no more than that, but it should be maybe even down, since we're really just latching on to there.
I know, but maybe we should subtract that from what we expect to get.
Well, this is a revenue, this is a revenue thing.
At, oh.
Yeah, this is a revenue column, so.
Is there an expense guesstimated somewhere in expenses? I don't remember seeing it. And it's not indicated that there's an.
No, no, I caught that earlier, and I was going to hit that later. That would be in advertising, and I missed that. And I thought when I was going through this, at about four o'clock, I, I realized that, but. So I can, I can add back five hundred into advertising and make sure that it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but.
Okay, so action item, add five hundred dollars as a, as an expense for surplus sales.
Right, in advertising.
Expense advertising. I know you said something in advertising, you're going to add it, that's going to be additional advertised to whatever's in there, correct?
Yes, it will to whatever's in there, which I think is five hundred right now.
All right. Commissioner Singleton, do you have questions on this page?
If I, if I faded out and I missed it, what are prepaid accounts?
Prepaid accounts are, are like, like me, whenever I go and put twenty dollars on a tab up there, so that I don't have to carry cash with me and I want to get, I want to go in there and buy a water, like for tonight, or get something else. It's just, it's just money that's in there that, then whenever people, and it's also.
So, so do we have revenue? I, I mean, okay, now, I, I get it, but, I mean, so do we have that actively now? And we're just not accounting for that revenue anywhere? Is that the case?
It's accounted for, and P and L has prepaid accounts or account balance purchases. I think it goes in under prepaid accounts. But you guys did not set a specific line item in the budget for it, so it's just kind of going to a place without the corresponding budget number to.
Well, because it's somebody giving us money to pay for something, right?
Yes.
So shouldn't it be target against, it's revenue against like passes or like, whatever it is?
When they put money on their account, we don't know what they're going to use it for. So there's no way that at the time they pay it. This is like, Steve comes in and he has twenty dollars either with cash or his credit card or writes a check. He's going to use that for water. If he's a patron coming in the door, he might use that for lap swim, he might bring the family in for family swim. So it goes to a variety of things. When they purchase that prepaid account, it goes into this column. When they use money off of it, it goes as those items that they're purchased. And then we subtract that out at the end of the day for the end days. So when they actually spend the money, it goes to the right line item. And then it just gets subtracted out at the end.
I just, sorry, it's, it's a semantical thing, but we don't actually propose items for the budget, they're presented to us. Just wanted to.
Understood.
Yep.
So this is not eighteen hundred extra dollars? Because that eighteen hundred is actually, should already be taken care of in concessions or in, should it not?
The, the expense will be offset in that, but, but, but when we receive it, there's no bucket for it to go into. And that's, and that's what she's, that, so.
Okay.
In a way, they'll be a little bit off here and there, but if, if the real total is eighteen hundred or anything around it, it's not like, oh my, this is glaring.
Yeah, it's not twenty-five.
Wow, it's so high on the water sales! You know, we don't spend that much, like, it's not going to cost all these different things. Exactly, exactly.
Okay, and, all right, line item twenty-four, two hundred dollars, trying to sell old Enwak caps as practice swim caps. And then I wrote in, leave it zeroed, question mark. I think it's because the number one thirty-three was zeroed or something. And then I said, and there's, so I think you had it zeroed out or the, you're moving it down, and it's like, so it's zeroed out somewhere? So we don't have any plans to do this this year?
So let me, I'll try to explain that better then. These are caps that have been purchased already.
Oh, and I've got that.
So there's no, there is no, one, one thirty-three is just a line, let me, let me go up to it. It's really just a line where it's a purchase for retail, which we didn't intend to purchase anything for retail. Let me find one thirty-three, yeah.
Okay, so there's.
Swim team, but because, because that's an offsetting line for it, these are just caps that we have. They have a whole new design that they've gone to, and these are just ones we're trying to offload for five bucks at a reduced rate, just to get.
It was, it was just confusing to me, because you had Enwak apparel special order. This will not be a line item in twenty seventeen, all will be under Enwak swim accessory retail. Then you go onto Enwak swim accessory retail and zero it out.
Yeah, and we don't intend, we don't intend to be in the retail business. The Boosters Club can do it, or.
Fabulous.
Or whatever.
Um, Enwak late fee, three hundred dollars. This is something that's like, you're depending on somebody to be late, and it's kind of like, maybe we should just take it as gratis when they are late. But, you know, really, you can't depend on it. So it's kind of like, why build it into the budget unless, you say, we always get at least three hundred in late fees, this is low.
They never disappoint.
Okay.
No, but, but the problem is, is when you get a late fee in, I guess, I guess we could, we need a place to put it, unless you just want to put it toward dues.
I, I would put it, I would put it as late fee, but I'm not sure that I would plan, I would, I would maybe make it zero, so that you, you have a line item for it to go in. But it's like, make it zero so that we're not depending on people to be late. That as part of our budget, we're planning on you to be late and give us the three hundred dollars. Because otherwise, again, that's being too optimistic, that, you know, you're going to give us money because you, you can.
Did it have a number in last year?
Yeah, and so, yeah.
Two hundred.
Yeah. So fifty percent increase.
They don't disappoint on this one here, yes, sir?
So, yeah, now she brought that up. Do we ever have, I mean, do we ever lose money, people who don't, who don't pay and then leave the area without paying? And so we, we have a lost income that way.
Does that ever happen on your watch?
I think we had one family that left owing a ten dollar late fee.
That's all? I mean, I mean dues and late fees.
In this calendar year, yes, that's the only one I'm aware of.
Plus, plus the dues? I mean, if they're late and, or they just didn't pay?
No, she had paid it, this particular woman, she had paid the dues, she insisted that she should not have to pay the late fee, so she refused to pay it.
Okay, all right. Well, that's all, that's pretty good.
Yeah, they're, this is really a good group about paying their stuff on time, I've had very little problem with that. I average about two late payers a month, so that's kind of where we came up with that number. But yeah, in general, they're a pretty good group about to compare.
Thank you.
Okay, now, and if it's based on a normal habit is blah, 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 this is, you know, the minimum amount we always are going to get, then that's, that's fine. The masters, the masters, twenty-five hundred, you, you left it the same as last year. What is this based on? How many people?
It's, uh, there are nine, I think there are nine masters.
Okay. And it, they were on, I saw they're, they're on target for making the, what we, so nine, okay.
And I think he just, he might be adding another one here next week.
Um, number forty-one, public record request. We, um, we had forty in last year's budget, and that was too high for, because we just haven't had any. But then it's like, so we made it twenty. And I wondered, how many hours does that twenty dollars represent? And do we, huh?
Doesn't matter, it's a header.
I know, so.
Well, it has to be offset somewhere.
Well, it, it doesn't actually. It, it doesn't have to be offset. There, there is, I mean, it's the law.
We have, we have a law somewhere, we have, they're not doing some work, or.
There's a cost to it, but there's not an offset, that's the difference, right? The cost of doing this.
Well, Wendy may know better than I do, but it's my understanding that legally we cannot charge for my hours to fulfill a request.
No, exactly. And I'm just wondering if, and I know we talked about it, we said, oh, we should put this in the budget to show how much it costs, blah, blah, blah. But it's like, are we, I like if we keep track of it, and so we know. But I kind of think maybe it should just be under your, you know, your pay or whatever, rather than even putting any figuring in. I don't know, it, it's.
We can actually charge the actual cost of not just the paper, but the machine upkeep and cetera, and cetera, that can all be factored in. And that was part of what we learned in that meeting.
Well, there's a maximum.
So we, we actually, I mean, we, we have to publish that rate.
Fifteen cents a page.
But I think we should factor that, we should come up with a rate and publish that. And it should be the actual cost and not just paper, because there's a lot more to Xerox. And it goes paper, you can charge wages, you're right.
We charged the maximum already, correct? The maximum allowed by law.
Fifteen cents per page, which I think definitely.
What is it, fifty cents per page?
Fifteen.
One five.
One five.
Fifteen, one five.
I think that definitely does factor in the machine upkeep and whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, does that cost fifteen cents?
I don't know, that's a pretty fancy paper.
I, I would just look at making this from a revenue perspective, like a buck, or maybe even zero, but, but like literally a dot, like, something that says, yeah, we might get something, but again, we're not, we're not, we're not counting on anything. You know, and, and it's not just for like, it makes us feel better, but it's just kind of like. You know, and it's not just for like, it makes us feel better, but it's just kind of like, you know, hopefully, because that's not, that certainly isn't one that's like, why is this over? Right? Like, you know, the expense is what it is.
We can do that. So we'll make it a dollar.
Okay. Action item?
$1.
Change. Where'd it go? Number 41. Two, one data. The interest, seven to eight cents per month. Woo-hoo! Where do we get interest from?
Bank account. Would be bank.
It's, we actually have a interest-bearing, okay, cool.
Yeah, but the money's never in there long.
I know.
0.04%.
I know. It's same as mine. Okay, that was all the questions on this page.
Okay, anything else for page two? All right, page three. I wasn't gonna address SCUBA, but I know you have a question. If you want to do the question first and then I'll move on to the rest of it.
No, so I don't get chewed on? I'll wait until the end?
Sorry, I don't wanna get you in trouble. I don't wanna get you in trouble. Okay, private party rental is running a little bit behind this year. But I think we're doing pretty well on, but the, let me find my note here again. Part of that could be due to the price increase that we did. But what we believe is there was, early in the year, some of those classes that Eric and Lifeguard in the WSI class, they occurred during the time and there were some cancellations from people that happened in there. It's a conflict that, anyway, they were conflicts and that cost us some classes in there. So we're gonna, this is the number we're gonna go for this year. It's kind of almost on open swim parties, line 48. We're running a little further behind. But this one is one of those things that I think we can market a little better. Maybe a lot better. But it's one of those things that I think we open the market, try to market a lot better and try to get out there. And then we're also looking at some different options for things that through the program subcommittee, we'll come to there and then bring to the board. Because her creative mind is now flowing and she's coming up with ideas, so. Okay. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I am hitting. I had that in. Sorry, Commissioner, I blew right past my own note. I'm about to ink a contract with the Windy Dive Center shop or wherever they are. I should know that. And it's $45 an hour. And in my discussions with him, he said, I said, what do you project as your need for the year? And this is what he said. He projects about 36 times throughout the year coming here and using the pool.
Cool.
All right. Clover Valley, that's up this year because we did finally ink the contract with North Windy Little League. So it didn't quite double, but it's pretty close to doubling what we were gonna get. So that's good out there for them. The Oak Harbor on 52, the high school swim team. The girls leave tomorrow to go down, not that this is part of the budget, but just to, you know, the girls leave tomorrow to go down to state down in Fairway.
Good for them.
So they'll be down there for a couple of days. They've got five, five or six?
There are six and they're all employees.
And yeah, they're all employees here.
Good job.
All the girls going down there. So they're all stoked to go down and have a good time and go to the ball. That's good. But what's happening next year, remember, the contract with the high school is every year this goes up. One of the things that we're, that I think was gonna, this won't be significant, this is hundreds of dollars. But since, and I'm gonna come to it later, we don't intend to do a full week shutdown and drain the pool this year unless we absolutely have to. We'll be open for them for the first week. And they won't have to go to Anacortes and give Anacortes Oak Harbor money. We'll be able to get it. It's only a few hundred dollars. It's not a lot, but hey, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye. Retail, okay, retail. We're leaving retail the same and talking with Julie on this one here. Back, if you recall, back in the February through April timeframe, I pretty much didn't spend any money if it wasn't payable. And because of that, we didn't spend, well, I'll take that back. We spent money on concessions up here because concessions go. Next to the skate park, that really helps us out, concessions. So that's a good thing for us. But we didn't do much on retail. And so I think it hurt what our numbers were for the year. But we feel confident that this year we should be able to do a little bit more. And we're also looking at conservatively increasing some of the things we offer. But that's still in the rough stages on, you know, people ask, people ask for towels all the time. You'd be surprised how many, I don't know that a week goes by, I don't at least get one person asking me for a towel. So those aren't that expensive to buy in bulk. Maybe that's something we do and it increases that we make sure people know we have it.
Will we rent those?
No, I don't wanna get in the business of having a washer and dryer.
Oh, buy them? They would buy?
They would buy them.
Okay, great.
Buy a brand new.
And if it's a cheap towel, it's like, they'll be happy to pay five bucks for it too, but whatever, that would be, oh, sorry.
You're good.
Yeah, means it.
So as we go down, wind up here on the revenue side here, that's kind of the mid-level. I don't wanna call it high level because I went into a little more detail in our high-level overview. But that's kind of the picture there. So I'm going to say, and so we end up with the revenue discussion here. Are there any other questions on the revenue side before I jump into the expense side? Yes, sir.
So yeah, line 40, let's see, 46 SCUBA.
Yeah.
So we made this contract and we made, we're gonna get $2,000 from this year?
I don't know if we'll get all 2,000. That was our projection.
Well, how much are we getting per hour then?
45.
Forty, this year?
Yeah.
It's only gonna be 45 next year then?
That's what the cost is.
So it's no change?
Yeah, there's no change in the cost.
Okay, gotcha.
What, do you know what our actual for 2016 was? Because on my actual report from, it was zero.
We have, because we got money in October, but that didn't show up in the October statement. It shows up this month.
So where the SCUBA divers haven't been here until the month of October?
No, 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 that's when they paid. See, this, do you guys?
They have been here.
SCUBA dumped in, remember?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You said that you thought the money went somewhere else?
Yeah, they went to a different line item, I forgot that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, he schooled me on that the other day, so.
Do you know how much SCUBA has made for us this year? Because I'm curious. Because we budgeted 2,000. Are we gonna make that? Are we gonna make close to it?
I wanna say the first P and L we received might be 400 or something. Then the second one might be 500 or something.
Can we just use that, can we just take it as a follow-up? I mean, we're obviously not gonna blow on budget tonight, so.
So follow-up question. How much did SCUBA make for us in 2016? And make sure it gets put on the right line. SCUBA, actuals, 2016.
Well, they're not gonna adjust the P and L, but.
But we'll give you to where, why it might work.
I don't even need to know what, why or where. I don't care, just tell me that that's what it was.
Okay.
I just wanna know. Okay, Commissioner Ford, did you have any other questions?
On the, just on the revenue side, then I'll hit.
Yeah, and Commissioner Shingleton?
Yeah, the same hourly rate for SCUBA.
A little tiny bio break, but you can keep going.
Viewing room rental. Okay, it was, it's, we've, for 2017, it's $45. We actually made almost $100. So is there a reason why we're saying we're only gonna get half of that for 2017? Sorry, number 49. And I know you say this room doesn't have any different, but it's like, if I was having a kid's party, I would love to have the use of this room to set up my cake.
That's part of the cost of the party already. This is outside of that. This is outside.
As if they just want, somebody wants to come in and have a meeting related to.
And that's the, and that's the, so what? I just don't, like I've said maybe three or four times, I just don't believe this room has any real.
Okay, no, and so, so if, I agree. I just thought that was part of the, that was, you had to hire it in addition to, you know, that you paid extra for it.
It's built in. At that rate though, it's built in at the $15 an hour rate.
All right, and then number 50. You said, we'll be pursuing a health department food service permit that will allow us to sell packaged refrigerated goods. My question is, is there a demand for that? Because I see this as a greater potential loss that will have, you know, candy bars last for freaking ever. And so does all that other dry stuff. But refrigerated stuff has sell-by dates or used-by dates and then it's just rotten and you have to get rid of it. That's my concern. If we don't have a demand, I'm not sure that that's gonna be.
There is a demand for some things and it's like with anything else, different things have different shelf lives. I can actually order from Costco, same delivery, a package of cheese and a package of chips. And the chips will expire far sooner than the cheese does. So it's just really smart ordering and paying attention to what people are after and what they're looking for. Part of the issue with this is that if you order an extra for swim meets, fresh stuff like that, that the parents are eating during meets, during special events. We have some of our senior patrons that they get out of the water and they're coming out there and they're getting a full little mini meal. And they're looking for things like that that would be a little healthier. If we get a two-day food permit to have that stuff out of swim meet, it's $70. Two swim meets is $140. If we do two or three other special events throughout the year, we will meet or exceed what it costs to get the annual permit. So it would give us a lot more freedom to adjust for the annual permit.
My concern wasn't the cost of the permit at all. It was, because I don't think I contemplated that. It was specifically if we're getting into the food that needs to be refrigerated, is that something that we're gonna have just rotting? Because I think, I wasn't even thinking of the swim meets, but I think that's good reasoning on your part, so, okay.
And if you order very strategically, so you're ordering things that yes, are going to sell here. You know, we have kids coming in from the skate park and, you know, they want cup and noodles because that's more. But if they're coming in at breakfast time, you know, they're looking for cereal. They're looking for maybe some milk. Right now, we can't offer them that type of thing because of lack of a permit. It's definitely something that we would approach very carefully and in a very systematic targeted way and just test the waters and see how things went for individual items. I already have a core group of probably eight or nine items that I think would consistently do well and then do have a good shelf life.
And we don't have much competition here, there's no other stores around.
Nice. And this is one of the areas where I work really hard to keep the prices reasonable. We're still making money on everything we sell. We make money. But I'm not saying, oh, I have to triple my profit on a candy bar. Because I'm able to keep the prices cheaper than them going to AMPY or going to 7-Eleven. They're coming here and, you know, they're buying, buying, buying every day.
Yeah. We don't need to make a killing, I agree. Number 54. Pool group rentals. Again, we, $500 was our projected budget. And our actual as of the end of September was $1,200. And we budgeted 740, which was more than what we budgeted this year. Why so low? Why not higher for pool group rentals? Yes, ma'am?
That is where SCUBA does.
Oh, thank you!
That was convenient.
Okay, that makes sense. That's a lot. Okay, that was all that I had.
Okay, now I'll move into the expense side down there, starting with line 62, the reserve. Again, I'm gonna go back to the goals, which is we're trying to build ourselves back up. So as much as anything else in the budget does, this ties directly into those goals of the reserve. Our plan this year is to put the remaining $13,000 from 2015 that we haven't put back in into it. And make our best effort to at least try to get $500 a month into it. If we can get more, we will. If not, you know, I'll keep you guys up to date on, you know, informed on where we stand on that. But I'm starting from a plan to try to build, get the, my first, my first goal is to get one month in the reserve. Then I wanna get to the second month, then get to our ultimate goal of three plus months in the reserve in there. But I gotta start somewhere and, as you know, this budget's not, there's not a lot of revenue here to play with. Next one. Unemployment paid. So this one here, you can see it's highlighted because this is one, from the one that I emailed yesterday that I transposed. I caught this transposition, that's why that's great. So unemployment paid, again, if you recall, a few months ago, we had a discussion about it costs, it would cost us about $6,000 a year to sign up for it so that we wouldn't have to pay anything except our annual fee of $6,000 a year. We never, I mean, what we did that with, when we had Patterson stuff in there. But our belief is that it's not worth trying to do that and hope that none of those, but the law is screwed up. Because if someone leaves here, let's say Joanne left here and went somewhere else because they're gonna pay her more money and four months later got laid off there, we're untapped for that, for our portion of that year, that base year. And to me, that is the most screwed up, that is the most screwed up law. Well, maybe not the most screwed up, but it ranks up there. And I don't, I do not understand how that.
Welcome to Washington State.
Yeah, I'm glad to be back, trust me. So anyway, there's this, I don't even know how to predict what we're gonna get hit with in this, from that because it's just not something that, you don't want it. And people do leave here, go somewhere else, so.
So this is.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you finished with this page?
No, I've got one more to go.
No, no, okay.
I've got one more line item on this page.
Then do that, sorry.
Director, so Julie, director of client services. As I've said twice now, I've taken QuickBooks function of hers and moved it to Joanne. I, because I've said to you guys many times, it became evident early in the year that Joanne and Julie just did not have enough time in the week to do the job that they're supposed to do. So I gave Julie two extra hours a week. But taking away QuickBooks from her will now allow her to focus more on the things that she, that she'll do as part of this job here. The things that are really gonna help us on the, you know, monitoring what's going on at the front, the special events, as well as the marketing and communication stuff. Four is right there. As well, she'll spend eight hours a week working shift at the front, not all at once, but across the week, she'll spend eight hours up there. And she, she's good with that because it gives her a chance to, I mean, she likes working up there and dealing with the people most of the time. And but she likes that and I think it's good for her to be there. Yes, sir?
No.
I'm done with that.
Okay, but is that cost-effective? I mean, because we're only paying the people at front $11 now.
No, she gets paid her rate.
I know, but so she's gonna get more.
And that's factored into, if you go up to line 68, that is factored into it.
I mean, you know, it's like, that was a problem I always had as a doctor. You're paying a doctor to sit down at a computer and punch out things where it's awful expensive. That's why they've gone to, I bet even that's getting on the side.
Well, you're a pretty expensive secretary at that.
Yeah, and again, I'm sure her wages are higher than the personnel.
Well, they are, they are. But they won't be soon.
Oh, okay.
That's the problem. But it's factored into the line 68 cost per 408 hours.
So 69 and 70, the reason one went up and one went down is because job changes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's all good.
Commissioner Shingleton? So that, going back to the unemployment paid to ESD, that's $600. Is that an amount we would have to pay for that person, unknown, blah, blah, blah? It's not that monthly amount or insurance or something?
No, it would be an actual payment for the period of time that they are coming in.
Yeah, so this thing that you'd written was not whatever.
Yeah, that actually goes to the EAS line, which is, which is.
Somewhere else?
Employee advisory, sir. Yeah, we'll come to that there.
Okay. All righty, I think we're done with that page.
All right, page four. Okay, 74 and 75 are swim instructors. So what you see here is a cost based on the most expensive rate. Where I can, where it makes sense for me to do that, we do it. But most of, but a lot of our instructors are newer instructors now, a lot of the more senior ones are, and they don't make the $16 an hour. But there are some that do make $16 an hour with the WSI certification. So what we do for this right here is I base it on the most expensive person in there. So that's how, why you see the numbers there the way they are. So that's how, why you see the numbers there the way they are. That's for 74, 75. We've talked about learning to... Training, number 77. Training's a trick, with safety being our prime directive here, training is important here. And unfortunately, I had to core this down even more from whenever we got the news that the minimum wage thing was going into effect next year. But we are upping this for training for the guards and for the, for the front desk people as well, but especially for the guards out there because they need, they're the front line of safety for the district right now, and they need to be kept, not just current, they need to be kept efficient in a lot of these skills that they have, so... In the past, training's sort of been, I don't want, I'm not saying this out of anything derogatorily, but it's been minimal. It's not really been given as much because I think it needs to be given, especially considering lives are potentially at stake here. Okay, lifeguards, line 78. Lifeguards are the largest of our payroll items that we have here. Jessica and I have been really looking at what the number we need to have on the deck any one time. We operate right now on a health department strong and quotes recommendation regarding the number of lifeguards we have out here because we have a very spread out pool deck. We have all the way over here, you could have, you know, a boatload of little kids in there, and you could have a bunch of kids in here, and then you have people in the sauna, and you have people in the hot tub out there. And that's a lot for one guard to try to keep an eye on and do everything. So what we have, what Jess and I are, is we're trying to be more cognizant of, all right, let's go real time. I don't think we need, and I don't make the decision for her. I go to Jessica and say, hey, do you think we need that second guard out there right now? Especially if she's in the building, it's easier because she's a certified lifeguard. So if something happens, then, you know, she drops her administrative side of what she does, and she comes out there like every other lifeguard when they hear the whistle blow. But, but we are going to try to keep with the intent of the health department's recommendation. But these will be real-time things that she and I are going to do, which will probably in time shape the lifeguard schedule as we get more familiar with, okay, well, this time is usually this, and we can base our staffing on that. The other thing that we have to do in this is train the guards. So we have, during open swims, we have, that's when the senior guards are on, only during open swims. But there's always a senior guard out there, not in that they're a senior guard, but the one who's the most experienced guard out there. And, you know, we can, knowing what's going on, it's training them and getting them comfortable with making the decision because they're kids most of the time. They're not used to, hey, man, why don't you go home? Why don't you go home? You know, so it gets into that. So we're really going to work with them, and that's going to be always a work in progress because there's a lifeguard, as you would imagine, is a high turnover of job people, or is a high turnover of job. So anyway, we're going to work on that and as best we can, keep, get that down. So when you saw in the past, now, I think it's important to say this, when you saw in the past budgets where lifeguards were $41,000, then whenever the health department came in and goes, man, you can't do that. That's too much to do. There's strong recommendation. That's why the cost of lifeguards went up, was based on staffing to meet the intent of their recommendation.
What's it about the...
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, hang on. Where are we? Two more to hit on this one here. 83, I'm sorry, 81 and 83, the head swim coach and the maintenance director. So Coach and Matt fall under this overtime thing that goes into effect coming up in December 1st. Both of them routinely work overtime, Coach more than Matt because the amount of hours he's on the deck and then the administrative stuff out there. So to get us out of that right there, I mean, Coach typically works 55. And I know, because I get emails from him at 12:30 in the morning and, or later. And I don't know when he sleeps, but that's his deal. And Matt also has many weeks where overtime has been required. And back in the spring, as a drill, I said, Matt, I want you to log in, just, it didn't count yesterday, I want you to log in. And we were seeing, on average, probably four to six hours, some more. Some weeks, you know, he'd hit 39 hours, but, you know, we were seeing a lot more in there. So what I've done is I've moved Coach up a 2.1% raise to, that's basically $1,000. It gets him up to $48,000. The threshold is $47,476 is that overtime threshold. And for Matt, I've moved him up to $47,500, which is just, you know, a few dollars over that right there. And so what that, what does that get me? What does that get the district? For Matt, it gets, now Matt, it moves him into the proper pay band for someone or what he does, and also prevents overtime. It also means Matt now will leave the second job, and he'll be here on a, I don't know what, he'll meet the time because he has to do stuff at night and in the morning, so he won't be here all day. But he will be district now and won't have a second job because of this. 86, shutdown maintenance. We went, we're not draining the pool this year. So we plan to do two small shutdowns, one in the spring for two to three days, and one in the summer for two to three days, depending on what, you know, what we need to do. So we planned $3,500 for last year, and with, even with all the stuff that we got done, we still executed about 50% of that. So I, my plan is to throw 100 hours of extra work across those two. It'll probably primarily go to the janitor, the custodial crew, will come in and help Matt, trust them to do the stuff that they do. But, you know, we might offer some hours to guards or someone that might want to make a couple. And all that's done at minimum wage during the shutdown, so they, they come in and do everything at minimum wage. So that's it for that page, for page four that I, where I outlined here.
Mr. Fort?
All right, so yeah, number 77, you emphasized how important training was. And initially, you had it 59, 56, 25, and now you've dropped it down to 53, 24. Why did you drop it down if it's so important? Why didn't you just leave it the same?
Because of the minimum wage thing. When that hit...
I know, I know, but I just don't think we should be, I mean, we should base it on what we expect is going to cost and not trying to adjust it to make the budget fit a need. You see what I'm saying? I think if it was going to be 59, 56 before, I think it's still going to be 59, 56. We should find some other way of taking $1,000 from the estimated whatever we're going to put in or something like that, rather than... I just don't think we should try and pressure it into fitting the budget. We should base it on what you guys actually feel you need and do that. And then we, then we put less into reserve or something like that.
Well, that would be one place to take it from.
I'm not saying we won't, certainly we've got to build up reserve, but we can't force the budget. Because, I mean, it doesn't work. Eventually, we're going to have to readjust it.
Well, there will be a year you don't have a readjust to the budget.
But I mean, if I think if you, again, if I think if you thought it was that before and you think it's important, you should just leave it at that.
The training is something that we absolutely control, and you weren't going to, you were going to cut out some training, correct? Than what you were initially planning?
Yes.
Okay. And you feel you can safely do that then, after the speech you gave before about how important it was?
Yes, okay. I had to make, I had to make some decisions across both Jessica and Julie's group.
Okay, all right, all right, then, that's fine. Uh, 22% increase for the Director of Maintenance. You know, I had problems before. So that's a, that's a state increase. But the point is, he's now going to be working here, strictly here. And so we should see more, more ongoing maintenance, like rust prevention and so on and so forth, things that I've been...
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
So the, the training is based on, it's a number of hours times the rate. Okay, it would be great to, because you spoiled us by saying that elsewhere, it would be lovely to see that, but the detail. I just think it's nice because, well, but here's, but here's why I think it will be nice is at some point when we're looking back on some of this and then say, now we understand better why we did it perfectly, because that will be our response to everything, right? Or maybe if we're off, like, oh, because we had this many more hours of training because of this new da-da-da-da-da, something that we had, whatever, you get the point. I can stop blathering about that one. Thank you for explaining the Director of Maintenance thing. That makes perfect sense, and I was a little confused by that. So the maintenance assistant thing, so I'm going to, I'm going to channel my, my Commissioner Fort with his notes here and ask the question. So if we have a full-time Director of Maintenance, why would we need 208 hours of hot tub cleaning from someone else?
Because that's a once-a-week thing for the, that he does. Otherwise... That gets done on late Sunday night.
Okay.
So this person comes in, does that, does the hot tub clean, that's what they do, I mean, that's what...
Okay, my, I think the original question still stands, though. I mean, that if we're paying someone full-time and we're raising their rate by 22%, that, I mean, it, it seems like something that we should question. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would agree. I would think he could do that.
See, I knew, I knew you would like that one. I knew it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Does it take like half an hour?
Oh, it's four hours.
Apparently, it's four hours per week.
It's a four hours.
Oh, sorry.
I wish it was only a half hour.
My math bad, okay.
Yeah, that would certainly, that would cut down a little bit on this.
Well, yes, it would. All right, well, then, um...
It's nothing personal. It's just...
No, no, it's not. And I'm not, I'm not taking it, I'm just, I'm looking at... There may be times when he has to come in and do that for him. I will adjust that one. I'll leave a few hours, a few times in there a year for him to come in and cut. Matt, you know, go on vacation or something like that.
Right, yeah, you have to leave in the vacation time and the, and I guess the on-call thing, whatever.
All right, so I'll, I'll...
Yeah, it's 208 hours we're looking at, rather than 80 and 32.
Okay, we'll just look for, we'll look for an update.
Yeah, I need to, I need to ask Matt what he thinks would work for him on that one as well, so, yeah, that, I can...
That's, by the way, I probably shouldn't have started with this. That's really, that's really exciting. I'm really happy to hear that, that, I don't, I don't know how the sequence of events happened, but that he'll be our, like, that he'll be able to, I don't want to say he's unfocused, I'm not, but I think that's a great...
Well, his total focus is here now.
I think it's a great change, and I'm really excited about it.
That's been in the works since last January, actually. But until I knew what was, how it was going to fall out, then I...
Especially as soon as they came out with the new law about...
Right.
Well, yeah, the overtime rule, that was in part the genesis of it.
Is that it? Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, line number 72, the lifeguard training instructor, $17 an hour. Who gets that? Who, who do we have that's trained to get paid $17 an hour for that?
Well, what it is, if you don't want to be, you can even apologize. So I have lifeguard instructor certification. That is the $16 we were talking about before. However, you always want to build a little bit of cushion in there just in case you have a class that maybe is not receiving information all the way, and you have to schedule an extra day. That's, that's kind of where that leads into. It follows, corresponding with the American Cross courses that we're offering. Because sometimes, you know, the course is geared around a specific amount of hours. Lifeguard instructor course, or, excuse me, lifeguard course is based around a, we usually do it about 31. In the book, it says 26.5, but we always expand to 31 because we know a lot of those kids, especially for the spinal rescues, is a really entailed procedure that they have to nail down. So building in that extra dollar helps us push in anything like that, and that's...
Interesting.
We charge the participants accordingly.
Okay.
Are you a water safety instructor?
Yeah, excuse me.
Water safety instructor?
Yes.
You are? Okay, so it must have changed because back when I was a lifeguard many, many years ago. When I was a water safety instructor, I was able to teach the lifeguards, but I guess they added that, a new, a new course to make more money.
Okay. Line item 82, Team Admin. So we were at 1750 for last year, and at the end of September, that, that was on target. It was at 75% whatever then, and now we're increasing it substantially. And it's like, do we really need that? Do we need that time for this? Do we need to increase this amount?
I'll let Julie question.
So putting back to 1750, I think we're going to see as the year finishes out, it may not have been quite enough. With swim team and their year-round cycle, they are in short course season from September through March. And then from April through July, it's long course season. So April through July, it's very quiet. There's not much to do. We don't add many new team members. It's, it just does not take nearly the time. From September, and through September 30th, correct me if I'm wrong, do I? You will not have seen my full payroll for September yet because that will appear sometime in October.
Okay.
So from September through March, but especially September through about December, January, it is a lot more intensive. We went to a new contract system where everyone had to be taken out of the system and then put back in as we get contracts. We have people that, they have a couple of different contract offerings now, so that creates additional maintenance and upkeep on that, just monitoring that. When they're attending needs and billing all those meet feeds out, as the team grows, it's going to take more time to take care of all of its administrative needs, process the stuff through PNS, interact with the parents. We have a lot of very new parents on the team. It's great. It's wonderful that the team's growing. They have a lot of questions, and I'm the one that they come to for those answers because they're really related questions primarily. Just as the team grows, it's going to take that little bit of time. And there are some people, some of those situations where I can spend an hour a week talking to them and helping them through those questions. This gives me a little bit of a buffer to be able to do that and meet the needs of the patron coming in the door. And it may be, there are some weeks where honestly, I cannot do Team Admin for an entire week. And then the next week, I might work 20 hours Team Admin, and then for the next several weeks, it might be just a couple here and there. I think this is realistic to what actually is going to happen in the cycle, especially as the team continues to grow.
Is, so is 1750 for 2016 going to be inadequate, do you think?
I think I'm going to have to cut it really close to make that work.
Okay.
I can't remember exactly what I'm at right now, but...
I, I think that's fair, and it's a, it's a, it's a good response and looking forward to the future. That's fine. Thank you. Those are all my questions on this page.
All right, go to page five. Okay. Vacations. I'm going to explain vacations on line 94 there. So what we, what Joanne and I went through was, went through to figure out. Vacations are actually the liability we have if someone leaves. And then they earn vacation, and they get this, they get unused vacation right here. So what the number in here that you see in here is, is at the 31st of December, each of these people, if they don't use any vacation throughout the year, this is what the liability is to them. So that's why you see the number in there. And although I gave, although Joanne and Julie got no pay raise this year, what I, what I offered, offered them was the ability to earn five days of paid vacation at the number of hours a week that they work, so... That's why you see their, their and theirs line number as well. Employee uniforms, line 108. This, there's, there are a couple of things that I, that need to happen. This, uh, there's, there are a couple of things that I, that need to happen. We're getting more lifeguards and we have to have lifeguard shirts. And all these shirts get turned in, but they get worn out and they're, they become nothing anymore. You just, you see, you can see Marissa right there in the blue. At, I wanted to go to that this year, but there's just not, right now, the way I'm prioritizing the budget, I can't go to this thing. Because what I want is when people come in here, they see someone in a blue shirt, they know it's an instructor. They don't have to worry, wonder who the swim instructors are and, and someone out there just in a one-piece bathing suit that might look, you know, have a clipboard, but, you know, they don't know anything. Um, so, depending on what we do, I may get to that. I, I, but right now, I'm not factoring that into the plan. But I do need to have more lifeguard shirts for, for the people out there. So, I mean, just so you know, my goal down the road is I want a professional-looking staff here. And so, swim instructors, if you guys come in with grandkids or your kids or friends or some, you should be able to look around and go, oh, there's an instructor. Let me go ask that person a question. That's, that's really, and that's about it. Line medical. Um, it's the same right now as it was last year because we won't know if there are any rate increases until December. That's whenever the open roll. So, I don't, I don't know what that's gonna be. And that's it for this page.
Commissioner Fort?
Okay, jumping right to one oh nine. Yeah, I mean, medical insurance costs are going up. I think we should estimate some sort of increase because it's gonna count. It's gonna be ten percent probably or more.
You think that much? Yeah, I, I would, I...
If you listen to what's in the news and, you know, the increase in Obamacare and all these other things, it's going up.
Was it, do you know what the difference was between 2015 and 2016?
Well, we had a lot of people in 2015.
Oh, that's right. We had a different number of people.
Yes.
And, well, and we also, yeah, only Matt and the coach and Matt's wife are covered in it. Um, we also, in my double-blind test to them, and it is my joke to both of them, I showed them what their options were and each of them picked the least-cost option in the district without me telling them what the other one picked. But I told them, both of you have to pick the same option. I'm not gonna have two different options. And that saved us, I think, almost five thousand dollars just from what it, I think it was around eighteen in fifteen, I wanna say. But I think it saved us somewhere in that neighborhood of, of money for...
So, are we going to put something in for an increase or...
I think that's actually a very smart idea.
I can, um, let, let me, let's try and call...
Well, we are going to get a rate or two. I did that, um, that survey.
Yeah, yeah, we already did their survey form.
That coming in phase, which is our broker. And we have to give them the survey every year in order for insurance companies to give us a quote. So, we're just waiting for that.
Um, I'm open to suggestions on this one. I mean, as far as the number...
I would recommend ten percent increase.
Figure that in. I think it'll probably, he's right. It'll probably be at least that.
Alright. We'll go ten percent up on that.
Thank you. I had one other thing. I, I, I like the liability of unused vacation. I think we brought that up at our last regular meeting and so I'm glad you addressed that. That should, certainly needs to be in the budget. Thank you. If we don't use it, I mean, if they, obviously, if they, if they take it during the year, then that's money we're gonna have extra in the budget. But that's good. We need to, we need to factor, we need to...
And even if, and if they don't leave and don't use it, well, okay, I know next year I rule over, because I know my, this, a couple of these numbers might change, Joanne and Julie's might change, Jessica's might change a little bit. But Coach, Matt, and me, our numbers should be pretty...
It's, it's a cost of doing business until, yeah.
Commissioner Singleton?
I have no questions.
Okay. I, and I still wondered about, is there, would it be better for us rather than having to have this massive accrual, taking the money at the end of a fiscal year and stashing it in a, in an account that says, here's the accrued vacation pay so that we don't, it just doesn't, we end up with this nice big pocket of money, but it, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger until somebody leaves and then, okay, now we pay him out of, because we have to pay him rather than, it's like, or it's in this, this reserve of money that we've been adding to. You guys decide what makes sense to you. Either one is fine.
Well, we'll, we'll do that as well as the, the cash flow thing we talked about.
But, and again, this, I think putting it in this way in the 2017, fabulous. It's, is what we needed, so...
And what you might see during the year is this number, this number decrease, which is good.
Because as people take leave, absolutely.
These are liability, expense liability goes down.
Absolutely.
For most of these, this is the max that you'd see at the beginning of the year on, in a budget to be approved.
Yes. No, and I, I think that was fabulous. Good, good thinking on all your parts. Fabulous. Okay, I didn't have any other questions on this page.
Okay. Page six. Alright, um, one twenty-seven, the travel, in-wake travel. You know, unless additional reserves come in, and this is what we anticipate getting, obviously, by the, you know, by the end of the year, we know the marching orders. We don't, we don't exceed what we've taken in unless other revenue sources come in. So, I mean, that's how we'll do that. Alright. Actually, on that page, that was it for that page because most of these are pretty, just redos of every, of what happened last year. I didn't think there was anything significant, so...
Commissioner Fort, do you have any questions?
Yes, uh, one thirty-eight, kayak equipment.
Yes.
What, why, what are we, I mean, what are we buying?
Uh, some skirts, a couple suits and some life jackets and stuff like that. I've got a, I, he's given me a list of what he wants to need to replace and we went out and looked at them and they are, they're worn and...
Are we gonna have the revenue coming in to start paying for this? Because over the years, I've kind of looked at the budget and kayak has been a sort of a losing and a loss. It's been a loss.
Well, I think right now...
After you factor in all the costs of new canoes, et cetera, et cetera, and new equipment, new salaries.
If you, kayak, kayak comes in at fifty-five, thirty, and then if I go to his salary...
They make about twelve hundred a year based on this budget or on this 2016 budget?
Even after that eleven fifty.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's fif, what does he make, fifty, we're bringing in fifty-five? It's about twenty-eight hundred, almost twenty-eight. Let, just around twenty-eight hundred, close enough. It's minus a couple bucks. Is the, is the, is the margin based on his salary versus that?
Well, this year, because we're not paying for all these canoes, but, I mean, you have to figure, those canoes have to be...
Yes, and he and I, like, we're gonna do the maintenance conference, the conference of major plan. He and I are gonna also go, okay, what are, what are these things, you know, when do we need to plan on a replacement?
Obsolescence, that's right. That should be factored in every year so that it's already been paid for when we need the canoe.
Yeah, but this year, there's no planned obsolescence of any, unless they get damaged for some reason or lost.
Okay.
But, right now, he's got a good stable of canoes out there, but we are looking at the obsolescence. I like your word there. But even with, even with this right here...
Not canoes, sorry.
He kayaks.
Kayak.
Sorry, I just was like, I feel like I'm missing something here. I really, really do.
Canoes, that's my fault, sorry.
No.
He started it.
Was, I, every once in a while, I get surprised by something.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I wrote down on this one, no, we just bought new kayaks that have not paid for themselves. We got, we got led down a garden path on the, on the canoe thing. They said, oh, these are gonna pay for themselves. You know, we're gonna sell them and make this much money. We didn't make that amount of money. We spent a lot of money trying to sell them and then we paid a lot of money, and we needed to. We needed to buy new kayaks, but it's like, I think there needs to be, this year, there needs to be some, so unless they, those things actually can't be used, I say let it, stretch it out, use them another year. But, and leave it up to you, but it's like, if they can be used for another year, leave them for another year. Not, we don't want safety to be a problem. So, obviously, if they absolutely have to, you know, if those things won't float anymore, if they just are ugly looking and...
No, no, but once he showed me where it wasn't just ugly, it was zippers that wouldn't zip right and...
Then, understood.
I'll, I'll go back through the whole list that he gave me with him and...
Yeah, because we just bought him new canoes. And I don't say he led us down a garden path. Sorry.
I just, I feel a matter of...
I know, they're, yeah.
Pool.
We, but...
We, we didn't, we didn't, it wasn't the budget, sorry.
Yeah, he, he did not lead us down a garden path. I don't wanna say that and that sounds awful, but it's like, but, but, we, we just bought the new kayaks and it's like, we haven't seen the revenue in that, that we were sort of led to believe we would. And we wanted to believe it. We so wanted to believe it.
And that'll give you some money to use towards a ten percent increase in the...
Yeah, so, uh, you know, if it, if it doesn't have to be bought, let's not spend the money on it.
Okay.
For, for kayaking, because we spent, we put a lot of money into that program and it's like, we just need some, to recoup some of that money first before we go buy more stuff for them, for him.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that and let you know what, what...
We love Pete. We love him. We think he's awesome, but it's like, we just need to be a little more conscious of that. Okay.
I'm done.
Okay, and Commissioner Singleton?
Oh, I know, I had one. Actually, I don't know, did we get to one forty-five yet? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you may talk about it. Or, did you talk, you didn't have, you had nothing to say about it, right?
It was the extra, it's the extra month that we got built, that's why.
Oh, so that's why it's cheaper this year?
Oh, good question.
Okay, good.
I can, I have, I have an insight into his brain right now.
Good, thank you. Goodbye. I'm done.
Did she have a hand in that?
Yeah.
I, I see his, yeah, notes. So, that's, I was like, I know that one. Um, so, okay, well, so I would, I would offer this as related to the kayak stuff. If he can help us when we're, when we're approaching our sale of stuff, you know, perhaps anything over and above, um, you know, we can try to, in, in, in other words, the more we make on the stuff that we surplus, then maybe that free, if, if there's free money there, um, maybe, yeah, go match that one.
I believe, I do believe we get to put a minimum bid out there for things.
Well, we did last time, so...
Well, I think we get to do that. And then, and we don't have to accept a bid if it's not what we want it to be.
Right, and I'm just saying that perhaps if, perhaps we can help, um, you know, Pete is the master. Perhaps we can help ask him, you know, with, hey, guess what? The more we get on these, the more likely we are to replace the stuff that you really want replaced. Um, incentive-based. Um, the, are we actively utilizing our chamber membership?
Uh, well, yes.
It did sound like a resounding yes.
No, I, I spoke, I spoke in July to their, to their thing and, um, although I was, I had intended to go to the September meeting and I got redirected on that, but I intend to go, I'm trying to go this month again. It's on seventeenth. I mean, I just, I mean, and I go and I did, it just cost me like twelve bucks or something to...
Right, to have lunch. Right, which you definitely would have to have. It just, we, it's something that we always just pay and I, I just would like to be sure that we're utilizing it because of, the, the purpose of it is great as long as we use it. Um, it's kind of like a gym membership for, not that I would, you know, have ever gym, gym that I did like to, but, right, it's like a gym membership you don't use, you know?
I'm just kidding.
Um, but anyway, so that's why I said, that is all.
Line one thirty, SD organizational memberships and four hundred, and I said, what is the extra hundred dollars for? And I'm not sure why, is there, was there something that's three hundred and then, so there's a hundred dollars somewhere? I don't know why I wrote that. I can't...
If we get an extra fifty dollars, if anything, because PNS registration is three hundred and masters is fifty.
This one is the same, the numbers are the same.
The organizational memberships, are they, they're four hundred is, is the total or...
Well, but it was, it was four hundred for this year.
Okay. I know, and I, that's why I don't know what I, why I wrote, what is the extra hundred for?
So, you're just leading us down a weird path that doesn't make any sense.
It is split between masters and PNS.
Okay, sorry, apparently I'm out of, you know, out of phase with myself. Um, okay, number one forty-three, um, web hosting. It was twenty dollars and then, or it's, you wanted it for twenty dollars and we forty-six dollars for last year. Why is it less?
Remember, we, we had to pay a penalty because it expired.
Oh, okay.
And so, this year, we, we're not gonna pay that penalty.
Okay. And training courses and tuition was six hundred for 2016. Wait, took it to three hundred? And I said, who is this for? Training, oh, sorry, line four, one forty-four.
Yeah, so...
It's just changed from what we have on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I meant to make that one of the notes to talk about.
And you didn't.
And I didn't. Because all the stuff, yeah, anyway, I had a senior moment. Actually, I, I need to bump that probably maybe a hundred to three eighty-ish or to a hundred because in, in October of seventeen, the CPO cert for Matt expires.
Uh...
And I know the courses cost because the lady sends me every time there's gonna be a course. I get an email saying, hey, in January, there's a course. Uh, but it's too early for Matt to go to a course in January because we wanna maximize the last one. But he's gonna have to get, so I'm, that'll either go up eighty or a hundred dollars is what I need to move that one up to cover that.
I'll just make it a hundred.
Yeah, I'll just make it a hundred.
Yeah.
Yes, four.
Oh, I had, sorry, I did have one on this page. Or, did you finish? I'm sorry. Okay, I was still talking. I was, line one fifty-one.
You're a lot of sync with yourself again.
I, I am. This has been a long day. Um, okay, line one fifty-one, bank fees and five hundred rows. Is that where we make the mistakes and we end up paying the, you know, because we get late? And I know why we're late. It's not your fault, but is that what that is, the bank fees?
No, there's, there's, well, it's a service charge. It has to be.
There is. I thought we were gonna look for one that didn't have something like that.
And then that's also where we get, where check orders go and deposit slips.
Okay. So, what's this?
Extra extras.
Yes, extra deposit slips.
Okay.
I was breaking my...
That was all on this page.
Glad you made, we're here to help you there, Commissioner. Okay, um, on page seven, uh, one fifty-five. Uh, this is the health and safety for the American Cross. So, whereas our revenue is based on, and, and I, I have no doubt we'll have more than four people in those classes or across the board, we will exceed that. But our base, this number here is based on, um, planning for classes, eight students for course materials. If the, you know, if they go higher, well, these, these get included into the cost of the course fee. So, it's not like it's, um, it's, it's, it actually works out. It negates itself, the cost does, because it's built into the course fee. Legal, um, we're gonna need a few hours for them once we start writing the levy thing. That, that needs to be reviewed by a lawyer. So, and they're three hundred. I, I'd like to believe that that will be six hours or more worth of work, but anyway, so I'm leaving it there because we will need to use them for that this year. Insurance, there's no way to know next year what our insurance, if the rates are gonna go up or go down. So, I just have to go, that's, I'm sorry, that's line one seventy. I don't have, there's really no way for me to say that that's gonna be one thing or another. I'm, I, my belief is, and I don't know how much, is once we get rid of those kayaks and the, and the two vehicles, our, our premiums should go down. We should get a refund or something for the premium, but, I don't know. CIEW has been awesome. Every time I call there, those guys are right on it. I haven't called in a while, but early in the year, whenever there were things that I wanted to know about, PJ and Monty were just, they've been on it. Of course, um, this is, I'm throwing that, you know, we can get Bruce back again since we have a new commissioner to do a refresher of the, of the course or something like that. And it doesn't cost us a thing to have him come out here, but, so, anyway, I'm just saying the CIEW's been, I wasn't here under the Endurse era, but CIEW's been awesome.
We're making a notification.
Yeah, exactly right. Okay, um, patron water and pool water, one seventy-five and one seventy-six. So, Joanne, I'm gonna have to give Joanne a sedative and then we're gonna go back over to the, to the city... over to the, to the city hall and talk to them. We have to figure out why we built, we filled up the pool. That's 200,000 plus gallons of water, but it showed up in patron water, not in pool water. But we turned the faucet on from back there in the maintenance room to fill the pool up. So we have to go figure out with them once and force them uncomfortably to figure out, how do you, how are you, we know the rate, we get this, we get this rate that's better than anyone gets, but how do you determine the, the usage of the water? I mean, how do you determine what you apply that rate to?
Are they diff...
Different rates?
There are, but, um, but anyway, we have, we have to, uh, we have to, I have to sedate her and take her back over there because she's fit to be talking about all this and figure it out. So I bring that up only because we need to, we need to, we need to know what they're charging us and what their metric is so that we can more accurately predict what we're going to do. We don't have any leaks out there. We don't have any pipes burst anywhere that are, that are, that are doing anything, uh, but one month to the next, it makes no sense what our water usage is. And so we're going to try and square that away. And on this page, page 7, that's it.
Commissioner Fort.
Uh, let's see, page 7, I think we've lost here. Um, oh yeah, so SPA was 8750 last year, it's 8,000 this year. Why less? I think it would be the same. See if I'm on the levy line, 177.
Yeah, yeah, I see it written there.
So it's 8,000.
I think I, I think I projected that on where we were, where we were projecting for the year, where we were tracking for the year.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nothing on 7. Oh, insurance. Well, insurance, you don't think insurance is going to go up?
I don't know, but I don't think so because I don't, I mean, it's...
I would hope not. I would hope. We've been good, so maybe we'll actually go down, but...
We're good. I'll just, Commissioner Singleton?
So, sorry, this has never just occurred to me before, but why is SPA something separate? Like, is that a power or is that, like, what is that?
It's the boiler.
Okay.
The boiler for the spa.
Gotcha.
So are we going to increase it, SPA?
No, no, that's, I was just telling her what it's for. It's the boiler.
Right, I was just trying to understand what is that measure?
Yeah, we'll, we'll change that. We'll retitle it.
That would, that would make...
So I mean, are we going to make it 8750 versus 8,000?
No.
No, no, no. I, I, I believe that number was based on where we're tracking on use for it.
Okay, alright.
But we're, I'm going to change the name to Spa Boiler. So it's more, we understand what it is.
Alright, so that'll actually be what we spend this year? The 80, 8,000 is what you're estimating?
Um, based on what I project for this year, yes.
Yes, okay, good. Alright, good.
If I missed this one, I apologize. Um, but landscaping maintenance, did you, I, I may have zoned out for a moment and if I did, I apologize, but have we talked about why that has gone up so greatly?
Uh, it didn't go up greatly. It went up one month because this year they didn't, they didn't...
It's gone up by, but from...
Almost twice.
Yeah, it's, it's gone up by $2,000.
Remember last, the 2016 budget, you, there was a, it did reflect the two, the two side of the contract in 2016.
Yeah, because...
Ballpark and pool.
Yeah, because there were, yeah, that's right. I was thinking that was only the boiler and that was this one too. There are two, there are two contracts. There's one for the pool grounds and there's one for the ball field.
I wouldn't have understood it if you hadn't done that, so... So I'm glad.
And for the radio audience, they're moving their hands around in a circle, whether it's counterclockwise or clockwise.
Yes, so they're, they're actually...
So you combined two items? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you. That is all.
So that basically includes both the here and the ballpark now.
Okay.
Yes.
Here's, here, I have a comment on that. I wrote, prefer separated. I do prefer that we see it in the budget separate. Uh, they can be right, right next to each other, but I would like to see, there's, to me, there's a difference between the facility here being mowed and the ball fields being mowed because I like to know what's, what's the ball field costing us.
Do that?
Just a thought. Okay, can we separate them back out then?
Yes.
Okay.
Sum total would be the same.
Right, the sum total would be the same.
Exactly. Sorry, I have to write this separate back out. JV, PM, profits. Um, number 164, advertising. And I think we had about $1,500 in advertising in 2016. I just was curious, what did we advertise? What, what, what did we spend money on this year for advertising? Cause, cause I was looking, you, you've taken the advertising money down to 500 for 2017, so I'm...
Well, that's going to have to go back up for the, another 500 again for the auction, but, go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh, we did water safety presentations at the schools, which, um, entail more paper usage and printing for all the students.
Mm-hmm.
And we had done, um, we had taken, you know, like a live jacket and some other things that we had here. I think there were a few things that were purchased outside of that. Uh, we created these little baggies for the kids that had things in it to draw them into the pool for swim lessons. And so a lot of that, I'm not quite sure how much at the moment that would be some, that was a previous aquatic instructor, she had dealt with, um, how much that had actually came out of that 1,500, which was that, but it was a larger chunk and so we should go and do water safety presentations.
Okay, so you feel safe though that the 500, we're disregarding the 500 for the other. The 500 is good, you're not going to need 1,500 to do the same.
Because we have a lot left over from those presentations.
The stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the other, there was, there was 700 and we, we got, Coach got a phenomenal deal on, uh, printing up these brochures that we handed out for those. There was 5,000 of them for $715.
Okay, and that was part, which we had talked, that was, okay.
Part of that too.
Okay.
So that should not be an expense that we need this next year, so we still have a lot of them left.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Where is like office supplies on here?
It is, it is on there somewhere.
It's probably on the next page.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I can't, I don't, I couldn't, I can't find it anywhere.
I know it's on here because I saw it last night and I, cause I, I always think of you.
121.
121, gotcha. Do you, you always think of me?
I do, because you're, you're the office supply Nazi.
Not a good word. Not a good word.
I know.
Especially in this current climate, so let's not. No.
Okay, anything else on page 7?
No, thank you.
Alright, page 8, uh, okay. So, Clover, 181, Clover Valley Dog Park. Originally I had this in here for what we had last year, 2250, but, um, I feel compelled to bring that down, move the expense. Uh, we do have a, as we met in our subcommittee meeting a week ago, a little over a week ago, there is a wish list, there is a, a thing that the volunteer group out there met with Commissioner Hofmeyer, Eric Zlinski, and actually Commissioner Frosch was there. You know, this year they had $2,000 and they did a lot of work repairing the fence, um, out there and that, and it really looks good. It's made a big difference out there. Uh, but there are some other things they'd like to do, but we're going to, we're going into, what we discussed, again, I'm not trying to take away from Commissioner Hofmeyer's thing next week at the regular meeting or week after next there, but there were, there were a lot of things that came up out there, going to, and these guys have some connections out there, like the CNW concrete, you know, they brought sand out there. So, uh, can we get them to donate stuff, uh, and then they can put a sign, you know, like the ball fields have a little sign on there that says, you know, a Home Depot sign. So we're going to look for some other ways out there. Um, the, the hard part here is the, the dog park generates no revenue and I don't, you can't, I don't even know how you would do that without doing it. I don't know of a, well, I guess one of them said there are, he knows of one dog park down in California that charges to use, but, but, um, yes.
Nope.
Anyway, so we're, what the subcommittee is looking into is how do we get more people, like, you know, construction people? Cause what they really need out there is earth move, another pavilion build, which, you know, we can go to the Boy Scouts, you know, now that I know who the Scout Master is. Hey, do you have any Scout, Eagle Scouts that want to do something? Maybe within the price of that is the, is the cost of the lumber. We buy the cost of the lumber and the Boy Scouts and his groups and the volunteer group, you know, those guys will come out and help and they build another pavilion. They need another pavilion over by the tree so it's out of the wind. The current one, if it's windy, it's basically the only thing it does is keep it from getting wet. Alright. Maintenance, 182. So I had some big plans for maintenance, but, um, with the, with the minimum wage thing, Matt and I discussed what we, what we could do here. So I originally planned to have in there the, um, the UV system fixed, but we've made the, we've made the, well, it's our recommendation, but our, our belief is the chlorine feeder needs to be fixed first. And the chlorine, the chlorine feeder, if it breaks, that's the one that we only have 48 hours of manually feeding the chlorine into the water. We've had a state and we've had a county health inspection. We've had zero chloro, zero bacteria chloroforms, whatever you want to break a call. We're, the chlorine's doing the job it's supposed to do and our chlorine's not really too high. Now, would I love to have that in there. As Matt said, it's great. It'll reduce some of the chlorine use, but the cost of running it, he believes, offsets it. But it's not a safety thing, whether it's working or not working to the water. The chlorine is doing the job it's supposed to do. So I, I took that out of it as part of the, how to recoup the, um, the stuff there. We had some major work done this year. We had some circuitry on the boiler, the vent system on there. We've had the hot water pump, the patron hot water pump back here done this year. So we're, we're, we believe, we're counting, and I know hope is not a strategy, but we're counting on those to remain in good condition. I mean, they're basically overhauled stuff and our new pumps, so that's going to be there. Um, there's some plumbing that needs to be checked around the building and some other things there. And so we, we feel it right now, um, the, the Strandtraal I think is around 13 to 1,500, but we think right now 12,000, as long as nothing goes totally bonkers, that we can make it work for that. Uh, 186, employee advisory services. So this one is the one, this is the question, we actually have an answer for you now on this one here, on what is that $900 we had the year before? So what happens with this is this is a two-year bill that we get. So it's a contract with these people for two years. So I talked with, and Joanne has as well, we talked with Scott Turner down at ESD. First off, it's not a requirement by law. We don't have to provide this to our employees. There's no law anywhere that says to do it. A lot of companies do it, a lot of government agencies do it. It's just a service. We don't have to cover everyone. So if we want to keep it in there, I mean, I'm, I'm basing it on, I'll tell you the basis of that is 20 employees because what we think, uh, and it doesn't matter whether you're full or part-time. So our sort of initial cut is if someone's working here 15 hours or more a week, because we have a lot of lifeguards that do that, that, that comes to about 20 hour, 20 people, times 15 a year, times two, comes to $600. Now, that's a question that, that's something that the board could say, we don't want to offer it for, for them. So, I mean, I, $600 isn't a lot, but I, I don't know the, I mean, we had one, we've had one person use it in the last two years and, I mean, it's advertised in here, but, you know, I just think a lot of people don't even, either, it's like all the other signs, those OSHA signs, people walk right by them and they don't even look at them anymore. So, uh, when we get to the discussion, we can do that, but, uh, right now, our recommendation is that we do it basically covering anyone making 15 plus hours a week. We calculated that to be 20 people. Election services, still the best that I, the best that we can do, they really do not, are not able or have not been able to adequately explain this and we, we're going to keep on them. Uh, but I'm just going based off the last election. And next year's, if we do the levy in November of next year, when the three commissioners are up, the three two-year commissioners will be up for reelection. Um, I, I just based it, I based it on that right there, getting the three commissioners and the levy in there and making that $10,000. The commissioners at about, I think I did the commissioners at either, I think at 2,000 each and then 4,000 for the levy. I, I don't know how they weighted, so it's, it's really not something that I can, or it could be 2,500 each, but, right now, they just haven't been able to really explain what that is.
And they won't know until they know what else is involved.
Right. Uh, 189, intergovernmental other. Where is that? Okay, so what's not in here, and this is my bad. So you see, you're, you're probably looking at it going, 741 and 1128, how does that equal $8,700? Uh, so, it, that's my bad on there. What's not reflected in there is the audit that starts to be near the end of, of, um, December. And that's, their estimate is about 7,500 plus maybe 400 to 500 in travel for them to come down. Now, earlier, or actually last week, Monday last week, on the 31st, Joanne and I drove all the stuff up to Bellingham and handed delivered it to them. So there was no postage, no nothing else and, um, that's, oh, I'm going to hit porta potty out there. That's up this year and, um, so that includes the normal one, but the northwood belittling, these are, these aren't Babe Ruth dudes that are teenagers that can walk up the hill by themselves and not really worry about stuff. These are little elementary kids at all. And they, they asked this year if they could have one, but they came to a two weeks for the end of the season and I basically had to say, yeah, it's going to cost me, it's going to cost me like $189 or something just for two weeks. And I said, do you really want to do that? I never heard back from them. But so I'm planning it in next year, um, as the four, it would be like for a three, they, they bill you by the month. It doesn't matter, you use it two weeks, one week, it's a month. Um, so I'm going to plan that in there for that period of time. And what, what, most of this cost that we discovered is not the, the rental of the unit is like 17 bucks. It's the weekly come out and take all the refuse out of it that's the stuff there. So anyway, I, I've got that in there as, um, for the little league guys next year. I'm going to, I'm going to, because I was going to do this a different way, I'm just going to hit my concluding remarks and then we can hit, if that's okay?
Yes.
Because, and then...
I have 45 minutes, just time, just practice track.
Okay, no.
I'm leaving at 3:30.
Oh, I don't, I don't think I heard you say that before.
I, I'm telling you right now. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so we were, I, we were off to something that we felt was really workable and then this minimum wage thing came back in there. And I, you've got, I, I gave each a copy of that for your, to you look at, but it's every year for the next four years. This goes up and then 50 cents next, about for 18, 50 cents for 19, and then a buck 50 for going into, um, 2019. And then, uh, we have a sick leave thing that's going to come in there and with a total of, uh, anywhere from, depending on who's here, 70 to 80 something employees, you know, that might even be in here only for an hour. Now, if they're in here for an hour, they're going to have to be in here for 40 total hours to get an hour, but still, that's going to be one of those things that's going to be really, really hard to calculate how we do that. We're going to have to work hard to figure that out. And we have until next year's budget, you know, to, to get that done and run that through the board for it. But it's, it's going to make things a little different for us here and which I think will, should, will affect, and from the levy subcommittee perspective, again, not to jump into that discussion here, but that might affect what we want to ask for on this right here. This is a...
Good point.
So for the year, for this year, for, for us as a staff, extreme diligence is the key, is the key word for us this year. Um, we, we need to have, based on all this increased cost, I think we need to probably, we need to have a serious review of operations that go on here. I think, I mean, more so than just a program review. I'm talking about an overarching, what are we doing, what are we providing type to our customers? And not to be, not to be discussed or decided upon tonight, but I think... but I think our recommendation would be to go back to what you guys did with the budget a couple of years ago, like a working group session, because I think this needs to have the commissioners in this thing here as well. Because we're great at knowing what goes on operationally out here, but sometimes we don't see a tree for a forest, a forest for a tree, I think, whatever the word is. We don't, we don't see it and you guys are, you know, more removed, so you have a different paradigm through which you see it. But I think, I think they're gonna have to have some hard, I think some hard, things have to be looked at. Maybe some hard decisions harder than what we really want to do need to be made about this place right here. I don't, I'm not in despair and we're not in despair about any of this stuff, but I just think it's time, I think it's time to relook at some things here. Maybe nothing changes, maybe some small changes, but I think it warrants relooking at. So, page eight, questions?
Mr. Ford?
All right, yeah, so 182, number a couple of things. First of all, when I did my little go-around with Matt, one of the things we did look at, he took me back there and showed me the UV system and I've done some research now. And he pointed out that not all the water goes past these little bulbs. And it's only the instantaneous time that the water is going past these little UV bulbs that it does anything. There's no residual effect and not all the water goes past it.
I wouldn't wear that.
Yeah, and so, as a matter of fact, I think it's a minority. It's not even a majority of the water. So, it's not that caught, it's not that effective. It doesn't lower the need for chlorine level. It might lower the chloramine level. That was, and when we're talking about things, it's the chlorine level is one thing, but it's the chloramine, as I pointed out when I gave you those handouts and tried to get people to swim or take a shower before they get in the pool, maybe we can fix the roof so it doesn't drip into the pool and decrease contamination that way. That will decrease chloramine levels probably more than a UV system. And in actuality, in Ozon, if we're gonna replace it, we're gonna have to repair, despite what Bill said, Walker said, if we're gonna have to repair the whole place, the whole thing, an Ozonuter system is actually a better system in the long run. But anyway, that was down the line. So, but I have a problem with, you didn't put roof repair on there.
We don't know what that's gonna be.
Well, that, as I brought up before, I think that should be number one or two. Certainly you have to have the one thing, the feeder, but the repair should become, that roof repair needs to be done. That will decrease pollution into the pool, decrease breakdown and so on and so forth. So, but how did we go from 2,000, we went from 19,000, now we're down to 12,000?
When I took the UV system out, it's 5,000 plus our estimate of about $2,000 for the electricians that will need for it.
Yeah, but we, again, I think we need to factor in the, it's not gonna, we're not gonna have to completely repair, replace the whole roof. We apparently just have to find somebody to foam in the shingles are sticking up. I'd love to go up there with you and me and Matt and, and you know, somebody else who has some, like Shane, because those things are sticking up and it's, that's the reason why I gotta think, I'm not, I'm not a maintenance guy. I'm just a doctor, but the reason it only leaks sometime when the wind's blowing so much, it's supposed to when it's blowing from the direction that pushes it under those shingles.
I did, I have talked to Matt about the offer that you guys presented to come up there together and he's on board with it. So, we can do that.
So, I would think, I would think foaming under, or putting some sort of ceiling under that would not, you know, would be in the few thousands of dollars as opposed to the 90,000 we're talking about before.
And it may be something that we can purchase the stuff ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's where I was trying to, I was waiting to go.
Okay, all right. So, anyway, I've beaten that into death, so.
There is no equine so deceased it cannot be flagellated more often.
I'm done.
You're good?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure. You should put that on like a plaque or something. Let's see, 186, personally, I would say let's keep it unless there's really a reason to not. You know, I, it's a benefit that you don't need until you need it. And so, that would be my comment on that one.
Can I, can I expand a little bit?
Sure.
One of the other things that I did not put in here, they get three calls. So, they can call and talk to anyone anytime, but if they get referred to a therapist, they get the first three visits are paid for by the ESD. After that, then it becomes, what's that? EAP, EAP, I'm sorry.
And is that, is that government-related or is that, okay. Well, so here would be my one thing, and maybe this is an offline conversation. But I do know that in one of the most recent situations that we had, there were concerns about the effectiveness of, of how it played out. I don't mean, I mean, once the call was placed. I just, I just say that because if we're gonna spend the money to do it, then I think we also need to feel confident that people are actually being assisted.
Well, going on with that, actually, I would propose we get rid of it. If it's not being used, it's not very effective, why are we paying for it? You seem to be leaning that way.
I'm sort of ambivalent on it, sir.
And I would agree with, I'm not even, I mean, if it's not effective and it's not being used, the only people making money is the company.
Well, and I think part of the issue was for that, and I don't know, maybe I'm on a different issue that they had with it, was there were no local therapists.
That was part, that was a part of the problem.
Now, there are three supposedly.
Okay, and that, that was a part of the problem. That, yes, and that, you know, I forgot, we did talk about that. I don't put it in time, so thank you for that reminder. The 189 Intergovernmental Other, I would just like to request that at some point we just break those things out. Because it just feels like they're all three important things. And one of them is not an annual occurrence, but it would be nice to see the notes that says, oh yeah, we're not due for this again until, you know, for the audit one, we're not due for this until this year. I realize that we don't always want everything to get longer, but I feel like each one of those things is important. It just, anyway, that, that's that. And then, and so, this is all, this is all semantics, by the way, clearly, but... And then, I do like that 196 porta potty is under professional services because it just is awesome that way. But I'm not really sure why it's under 8041 and not, like, why isn't it under 2041? Like, is there a reason?
I don't know. It's always been under.
If we could, again, I don't know how to withhold anything I'm asking for. It just, I mean, I...
It's professional services.
Which is also professional services.
Yeah, it just, it was kind of like, so porta potties just hanging out over here. It would be, it would be great just to put, under 2041?
What the line 161?
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, too many, too many numbers. Line 142.
Okay.
Or is there another one?
No, no, that's it.
Yeah, yeah, I just... And yes, I realize, like, I remember the days when we were nitpicking the heck out of everything. What is that? What is it? So, the fact that there are few things and they just stand out is actually a great thing, right? Because it means that the thing is pretty pure and clean. So, please take that all as a compliment, even though I'm asking you to change it. Yes, that was all.
Okay, so, for the, where did it go? There's number 186. And so, can we ask you to go back, think about it, talk to people about it, and come back with a recommendation to the board of what you think based on that it, if we're not, I agree. If we're not using it, we can use that $600 somewhere else. But if you think that it, that it will be used, then maybe we should keep, you know, I'm kinda like, I'm ambivalent and I won't be here when the board, when the board needs to do this.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know that 11 days is enough to talk to enough people. So, my, I guess what I would suggest is we leave it in there and then at the mid-year, if we make the decision, this thing runs us through June already, the current contract? It's still good through June.
Oh, so we don't have to make a decision to pay for, and you pay $600 and it goes for the next two years?
It would go till 19.
Okay, make, make a note then. I'm gonna put the action item to be discussed at the mid-year review. And we do have to discuss it before we pay them the other...
Yeah, before that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just, in fact, maybe it'll even in the December.
Yes, you may.
So, I think you touched on this and now I'm just trying to think back a little bit here on the, so why, why is it 20 employees?
We based it on the number of employees on average that work 15 hours or more a week. We don't have to, we can cover whomever we wish. There's no law that says we have to apply it to everyone.
I guess I would wonder whether, so maybe this doesn't make any sense at all, wouldn't be the worst thing. But, but it's kind of a, based on our usage, I mean, could we, I mean, can we, we can, it's all, like, so, okay, it's what then?
You pay this two-year fee and then, then anyone, anytime can call, I mean, it can come...
No, I understand that, but, but I get that, but did we pick the 15 hours a week or did someone else pick that?
We didn't. We just picked a number and went, who do we think the ones that are most likely to?
But if we had 10 employees, would it be less?
It would be half, okay. That's, that was kind of my point.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to say, that was exactly my point is, okay, well, so, let's see. The average number of calls over the past three years has been, the average number has been one-third.
Actually, it's true. It's true.
She does math.
So, she does, and, and so...
The minors, how many hours they've been working, that's what we...
Yeah, I want you to say that.
We pick the 15 hours based on the minors that we have.
That, meaning that they could call?
That they work. They could only work 15 hours a week.
Okay.
So, 15 became the line.
Yeah.
If you don't work 15 hours a week, then our recommendation was, our recommendation would be then, then we're not gonna cover you in this, but if you work 15 hours a week or more, which would be 20 people.
Right, but I, so I think there are two things, you know, I think one is coverage and the other one is probability.
Right.
And, and so, you get what I'm saying, right?
I do. Let's, why don't we pick some smaller number that's gonna not be so expensive based on the probability of having anybody that needs it? I think it would be good to have in our back pocket for maybe two people, four people.
See, I don't even know, I could go with the six senior staff.
Well, do you actually have to give them names or just give them a number?
No, I don't even do.
So, then, so then just say two to four people because, because...
We're gonna cover six people and...
And if we need to increase, I mean, I can't imagine that, that if we had to increase it at some point, that their response would be, I'm sorry, we're not going to take more money from you, right? I mean, if, if we felt that we were, if we had, if we had three, if we had three at a certain point, we need to get increasing it. And maybe this isn't the right way to go about it. I, it's not, we're not trying to be sneaky, but we're trying to ensure that it's a valued service.
One thing I never got out of, in my discussion with him was how do you verify someone's with, you know, how do you verify? You could call. You're not an employee of the district, but you can say, I'm an employee there. I mean, what he told me was I could have one of my college kids having a rough time with a final and calling just to talk to someone about it. Okay, I mean, of course, in my mind, I'm thinking, well, there aren't, that's why you can college counselors.
School for, yeah.
But, but it doesn't matter. If they're an employee, they can call and talk about any problem, life, work, whatever.
Right, and that's, I think for me, that just the idea of eliminating it, I suppose, because it's always been something. I've, I've never, well, I've never worked a professional job without having this available to me. I've never used it, but I've never, I've never done that, you know, it was always, and you know, brochures in your face everywhere, which is, which is great. And I think if we're trying to be a quality employer, that we, I believe we want to provide that. However, I also think that we should look to find the right balance and not pay more than we need to. And again, it's not trying to be sneaky, it's just a third, you know, you know, over three years, we use it at one time. Maybe, maybe we don't need everybody to be covered immediately. If something happens and people want to call, you know, I don't, I don't think, I personally would say absolutely, we will support you in that and find, and find the money. And I realize where this is like, but...
If I was to, I just did the mental math, if I was to go just the six senior staff, the five department heads and me, that'd be 100, that's six times 15 is 90, times two is $180. Again, I don't know that they, I'm sorry, Joe Blow, but I see Jane Doe on here and not your name. I don't know that they do that, so.
Anyway, you're gonna look into that.
Yeah. So, yeah, and then, then all we have to do, so if we leave 600 there and it ends up being something less when it, when it comes around or zero, well, then it's $600 that we didn't have to spend. Is that the way you guys were looking at it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we are, I mean, it sounds like there's a follow-up to us.
Yeah, yeah, there's connection on them.
I got to be discussed before June 2017. As in, what do we want to do? So, so let's say the April meeting, let's, let's discuss it in April, so that gives us plenty of time for some follow-up questions in May if we need them and, you know.
I'll put it in the queue.
That's super efficient of you.
Yes, sir.
I can do that sometimes.
Are we done? I wanted to go back to a couple of things that I missed, I'm sorry.
Well, she was still asking questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, it was actually, I think, the only question that I had on this, oh, no, there was one. The election services, and we had it zero for 2016. Didn't we have to pay for the five?
No, because the bill came in in December of 2015 and it was due by the 29th.
Okay, I'd forgotten that. Thank you. Awesome.
That was another one of those unexpected 10 grand expenses.
Yeah, okay, that was it for me.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I missed a couple of things. Line 103 Payroll Taxes, you estimated it 13%. I remember you had an accountant here one time and he said you should base it on, you know, dividing the payroll taxes versus, I mean, the payroll taxes for the year divided by the year's salary. So, if you go back for previous years that I've done, it comes to more like 14 to 15% each time.
So, and I did it the same way. I did it, I did it at the third quarter.
Right, well, I did it for the end of the, I did it for the end of each year.
But it should be, it should, actually, it should be the same every quarter. So, I just took how much our salary, our payroll was at the end of September and that, and then that's why it came up. It's actually like, it was, it was 13 cents.
Okay, my two years, I did it for two years, previous years, and it came out 14 or 15 cents, somewhere in it. And then, 114, how many, how many computers do we have? How many do we need? Can we share? Can we, do they all have to be used simultaneously?
Well, yeah, because the only people that have computers are the people up front that sit at the front desk and then the senior staff. And right now, she, because Matt's not here most of the time, you know, during the day, she's able to use Matt's computer, but she doesn't have it. One of our computers broke a few months ago. We saw it happen.
Well, I notice people in the, whatever you call a fishbowl, they're using computers.
Well, no, that's just, that's just Jessica and Coach have a computer.
Okay, so there's two there, there's one at the front desk, you said?
Yeah, and then three back here.
So, that's six, six computers?
Well, I have a server.
Yeah.
And I need to, I need to buy one for her, so that would be eight.
Eight. You need two computers?
No, there's a server.
Oh, a server, okay.
There's a server that we have.
Okay, so that's not really a computer, that's a server, that's, yeah, okay.
It doesn't function as a desktop, right?
Right, okay, so we have six that are functioning as desktop.
We have, and we have one that's broken, that's...
Seven. Well, six that are, six plus one broken plus the one up front.
And we need, so that would be seven we have right now and we need six. Why, we need to buy another one?
Well, there's, there's three, there's six.
Five.
Five.
There's five. Jessica's, the front desk, mine, Steve's and Matt's.
And Coach. And we need seven.
Coach doesn't have one?
Well, Coach has one.
Okay, I know.
There's six and we need seven.
Right, and we had, we used to have the one in the corner and that one's no longer functioning.
And so, that, I've got that at $500 because I can get refurbished.
Yeah.
And I've looked them up and of course I have to get a few quotes, but... And I've looked them up, and of course, I have to get a few quotes, but I've looked them up, and I've seen them as low as $350 with enough minimum.
With the current software, because it's not gonna expire, because now they're going to Microsoft 10 or something.
Well, I have to get, whenever we get it, it has to be Pro, or it won't connect to our network.
Okay.
So that's gonna be the limiting factor.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for all the hard work that's gone into this.
Yeah, thank you all.
And for the, I'm trying to think, the, there's a, there's a great word for it, but it means you, you put a lot of thought and effort and good thinking behind it. Do you know what that word is, I'm thinking of?
I don't know what you're thinking of.
Professionalism?
No, that wasn't the word, but it, but you did that too. Anyway.
I might make it two times.
No, but I, I very much appreciate that, how much work went in it in trying to make it a good budget that will last the test of time, knowing that, you know, we can't, we can't control that closely or that well how many people walk through our doors to use the pool, so. And, and what next maintenance calamity will befall us. So, no, good work, and there's a, there are a lot of things to be done to fix it up, and I guess you'll bring it to the next regular meeting, and...
I can bring it to the 14th, Matt, it isn't a, well, we're gonna do the agenda Monday after the levy thing, so yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what we need to do, and so, we'll go over the list that I've written down and make sure that we are agreed on the same thing afterwards, okay? Does anyone have any other, would you like to make comments to them before we let them go? Nothing else, okay. All right, so we are gonna go into executive session, so that, and you guys are free to go. Thank you very much for your time and effort. Okay, and so the...
Isn't this fun, don't you wish you could come these more often?
Thank you very much. So for two years, this was obviously, I mean, this was a lot, I mean, I don't, I hope it was less painful for you this year than it was last year. It was far less painful for me, so I appreciate the heck out of that. And, and Jessica, thank you as well, I haven't, I don't really interact with you, but thank you, you were super, you did great, so I appreciate it.
She, it was a huge learning experience for her.
Well, aren't, you know, then, isn't that...
Okay, we are going into executive session in accordance with RCW 42.30.110, paragraph F. It is now 2012, we will return by 2025, so that we can adjourn the meeting in a timely fashion.
Are we going, does the potty break?
Yes, could take a... Okay, we're called back into order, it is eight, eight twenty, is that, because that clock says 8:28.
If that's the one you used, 21st one.
It was what I, so it's 8:28, we are out of executive session. Do, does somebody have a motion on adjourning? We're done with...
I may motionably adjourn.
Second.
It's been a second, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair agrees, we're adjourned.